Gloria Gonzalez Delucchia.
Here.
Alexis Grimes.
Here.
Shadé Poshakon.
Here.
Erin Johnson.
Here.
Christine Mauer.
Here.
Anna Smith.
Here.
Alright, with a quorum of the board present, it is 6:18, or 6:17 on that clock, and I call the LISD Board of Trustees Meeting to order. We will go right into our agenda here, start with the opening ceremony. We have our pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is Cadet Petty Officer 3rd Class Mario Vangeli of the Lone Star Company Navy Junior ROTC at Vista Ridge High School. He's going to be leading for us the pledge of allegiance and the Texas pledge. Cadet Vangeli is a sophomore and second-year cadet. He is an active member of Lone Star Company's unarmed drill, physical fitness, and marksmanship team. He is a graduate of the NJ ROTC Basic Leadership Training Course, and takes pride in serving the community as a volunteer at the Veterans Memorial Park and local adopter road cleanups. Cadet Vangeli recently earned designation as Cadet of the Month for his demonstrated loyalty, reliability, patriotism, and exceptional performance of duty during the month of December. Cadet Vangeli's performance and dedication reflects most favorably on the Lone Star Company Navy Junior ROTC, his school, and the district. Well done. Thank you, Cadet.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
If you'll join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Alright, board members, a highlight as always of our meetings, we have our spotlight on learning. Stiles Middle School is here to present this evening and tell us all about the great things that are going on on their campus.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us here. We are so excited to be here and talk a little bit about Stiles and everything that is going on. Not everything. We've got about 14, 350 missing students and over 100 staff. Shout out to those Spartans. I'm Melody Maples, and I have proudly served Stiles for five years. And it's pretty inspiring to see us live out our two very wild goals for the year, which was the first one, making connections with our students to their learning, to each other, to the staff, and then ultimately being intentional about creating opportunities to connect them to their entire campus community and each other. And so, we get to spotlight two classes that we launched this year that embodies those two goals in ways that are probably beyond our own expectations of the year. So, you are not here to hear me speak, and I brought plenty of people to take the microphone from me. So, I'm gonna let them share a little bit about how they have lived out these goals, and I've had a front row seat to see this happen. And I'll tell you what, we could spend hours just sharing all the things that they've done. I will pass it on first to our broadcasting class.
Hello. My name is Amy Whitehead, and I teach the multimedia productions for 7th and 8th grade. And I want you to know that our future is bright. If anyone has ever doubted kids, don't do it. Come and see us, because every day is so exciting in our newsroom. Also, it's just so amazing to see what 13- and 14-year-olds can do. I couldn't do it when I was their age. It's not just the technical skills that they have. It's the self-confidence, it's the leadership, it's all the intangibles that they've learned this year. And they work so well together. It's just been my joy of my 29 years to be there and to be with them this year. And so, I'm gonna pass it on to them and let them tell you how great it's been.
Hello, I'm Nolan Bond, an 8th grader at Stiles, and I'm the anchor for multimedia productions. Multimedia productions is great because it offers skills that carry on to other classes. For example, I get teamwork, because each role in the newsroom carries to make one great project, so I can use this to work with partners and ask questions with my teacher and not be afraid to communicate with them. I also get speaking skills from being an anchor and reporter. I can use this to have a projected and great presenting voice. I also get tech skills. I know how to use editing apps, cameras, lighting, and other things. And this is great because it gives me other ways to create and learn. This is also learned from no prior knowledge. I had no idea any of these skills coming into this class, and I learned all of it this year. Thank you.
I'm Alex Harper, and I'm the PSA producer for the news. And basically, I make the scripts, I edit the videos, and I step in when we don't have people there. At the beginning of the year, I created the logo, and over, it's evolved into like, when there's holidays, I'll put like, different stuff on it. And now, I'm making graphics for the videos. And I really love the class because it connects the whole school. Like, I always get people coming up to me and saying, "Oh, I really love the news segment today." And we also get like, a lot of critiques and suggestions, which really help us like, learn and grow. And I really like it because of like, you can contribute your ideas and see them like, come to life in the class. And I really hope that like, we can put it in other schools so kids can experience it.
Hi, I'm Aisha, and I'm in 7th grade and an anchor for multimedia productions. One of the reasons why I like this class so much is because it's so different from other courses. Everyone is helping each other with their jobs, and it's more of an independent class rather than the teacher saying something and all the students taking notes, which makes it really unique. I feel like we work together so well because of Ms. Whitehead. She always keeps us organized and makes everything so much more fun. Because this class is so student-led, we learn broadcasting by working together and learning from our mistakes. We all learned how to edit videos, be on camera, take a good picture, learn about graphics, take charge, and so much more. Something that we do in multimedia is called continuous improvement, which means that we always look back at our previous videos and figure out how to improve from that. Because of this, we taught ourselves so much since the beginning. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shari Shan. I'm a 7th grade multimedia student. Currently, I'm a script writer. In the newsroom, everybody has a role to play. We all have different responsibilities, strengths, and skills. We have a certain routine in the newsroom so we can roll out our news show efficiently. First, the producer and our script writers work together to create a script. Then, the camera operator films the raw footage of the anchors. Finally, the editors revise and combine the footage to create the smooth and finished news show that you would watch at your desks. However, that's not the end of the story. There are so many other segments for the news show, and each has a dedicated team. We have reporters that do everything from interviewing students to spotlighting topics or events around the world. We also have a team of amazing graphic designers who create slides for the show. Our jobs rotate too, so everyone can learn various skills. Now that we are further into the year, we are working toward more permanent roles. All in all, our new staff is coordinated and dedicated.
Hi, I'm Lisa LaFawn, and I teach Principles of Arts and AV. And basically, I show my students how to use the Adobe Creative Cloud software, which includes Illustrator, Photoshop, Animate, and Premiere Pro. We go over topics like graphic design, fashion design, animation, and videography. So, once they gain these skills, I let them explore, create, and problem-solve with different assignments and projects. So, they have multiple ways in which they can approach these projects and assignments. There's no real right way. It's the goal that we have in mind. And so, one student may, you know, try one thing, another student may try another approach, and it's correct, as long as they get that end goal. And what I hope that they gain from this class is not only that there are multiple ways to get that goal in my class, but in life itself. So, I've given you some samples. On the very back is a QR code to a form where you can vote on their animations. And I think Aparna is gonna be talking about, a little bit about that, so I'll let her continue.
Hi, my name is Aparna Jagannathan. What I learned from this course is that we have a lot of challenges and projects that are very interactive with the students. For, one example would be the animation contest. It really expressed my creativity, and it challenged me more to do creative work. And the Draw Halloween contest was in October to have a fun way of celebrating Halloween in Arts and AV class. It was a great starter into the Adobe software. And the contest made me learn and use tools that were not really used in class, but made me learn it for this particular challenge. And these challenges shaped me up even better as a person. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth. The project that stood out to me for Arts and AV was the Christmas card. That helped me find the people who I worked best with and the skills I need later in life. It also helped the front office of our school pick out cards to set out for the season, because then they wouldn't have to go to a store and have eminent creativity cards to look at. And we would actually get to talk to them and get to know what the client wants for their card, really. So, that helped us develop the speaking for talking to a client about that kind of stuff. It also helped me with making like, an infographic for one of my assignments for a different class, or just making a random thing for my mom.
Hi, I'm Caleb Wycom. I'm an 8th grader, and I think Arts and AV is special because it allows me and others to express their creativity through the assignments that Ms. LaFawn gives us. I think one of the examples that I'm gonna use is the fashion project. Basically, she made us put together a team of four people, or three or four, and made us pick a theme, and then just gave us a bunch of templates for clothes, and then just did whatever we want to do, as long as it follows a theme. And I think that's an amazing choice, that she just lets us do whatever we want. And, you know. Okay, okay. School-appropriate-wise. And aside from that, normal assignments, you just, you know, get some normal rules, usually a tool that we just recently learned. And that's it, you know. You can do whatever you want with it. Or, not whatever, but... You can make it, you know, just something you want to make, and I think that's really cool.
So, I got the pleasure of, well, sort of, volunteering the Principal of Arts Audio AV, which is also a high school credit for these students, which is great going into high school. It kind of opens up doors. Graphic design is a very popular program of study within both of our feeder patterns. But I kind of asked them if I could be the client for the annual holiday card, and if they would have a little fun. And of course, the assistant principals were, they were like, "Yes, sure, let's do that." So, that was very fun. And our broadcasting students are currently working on a promotional videos for each of the elective courses to help students select elective courses for our campus as they come in as 6th graders and then 7th and 8th graders. So, they've gone beyond just even the coursework, but the skills of our students and the passion that they have and the excitement that they have is something that inspires one. But they're inspired by two amazing teachers who are fearless, and I have encouraged, and we continue to encourage them, what risks are you willing to take to see this come to life? And I love that the attire project seems to be producing some really cool shoes. So, those that know me know that that's really cool. But we are open for questions if you have them. We could talk for hours, but thank you. Thank you so much for giving us a chance to just bring a little bit of scope into what we do here at Stiles.
Y'all are amazing. It is tremendous. Thank y'all so much for coming out and presenting. We appreciate it so much, so thank y'all. We will now move on to the next part of our agenda, where we're looking at recognitions on campuses. It'll be on video. Going through the agenda, you'll see the TMEA, All-State Band and Choir, Cedar Park High School, Leander High School, Rouse High School, Vandegrift High School, and Vista Ridge High School. We have the Suddler Shield from Leander High School, the Suddler Flag of Honor from Vista Ridge High School, the UIL 6A State Runner-Up Vandegrift High School Cheer, the National Federation of High School Association Girls Basketball Coach of the Year from Cedar Park High School. So, if they'll direct your attention to the screen, they'll get that up for us.
Leander ISD is proud to recognize these outstanding students and staff for their accomplishments. The Texas Music Educators Association enjoyed the musical excellence of 45 Leander ISD students this month at the All-State Band and Choir performances. Students from Cedar Park, Leander, Rouse, Vandegrift, and Vista Ridge High Schools took their places among the best musicians in the state. These students have worked hard for a long period of time to reach this level of success, and their accomplishment is a reflection of their dedication, as well as that of their teachers and directors. The John Philip Sousa Foundation has recognized two LISD high school bands for their exceptional achievements. The Leander High School Band has received the Suddler Shield, presented to outstanding high school marching bands that reflect continued excellence over a five-year period. LHS is the third LISD band to receive the Suddler Shield. The Vista Ridge High School Band has received the Suddler Flag of Honor, presented to outstanding high school concert bands that reflect continued excellence over a seven-year period. Vista Ridge is the second band to receive the Suddler Flag of Honor. Presentations of these awards to the bands will take place this spring. The Vandegrift High School Cheer Team charged to a silver medal in the coed division at the UIL Spirit State Championships. Along the way, the Vipers took top honors in the crowd-leading and fight song categories. Cedar Park High School's Coach Donnie Ott has been honored as the Texas High School Girls Coach of the Year. The Lady Timberwolves are the defending 5'8" state champions. Coach Ott is also the National Sectional Coach of the Year, which covers New Mexico, Oklahoma, Texas, Arkansas, and Colorado. Congratulations again to these outstanding Leander ISD students and staff, their families, and school communities.
Alright, the next item on our agenda is superintendent remarks. Dr. Garing.
Nothing at this time, Madam President. Thank you.
Board members.
Last week, I went to Knolls Elementary for a campus visit, and I wanted to let y'all know it was amazing. But what was really cool is we got to see the Thinkery program there, and they were out there hanging out with our early child campus, early childhood classes. And I got to dig in the dirt and find some worms, but we got to see an amazing outside program coming into the classroom, and just the kids having a great time. But most importantly, Knolls was one of those campuses that was picked for an early childhood hub, and I got to see once again that inclusive environment in the making, and how they've truly embraced, you know, what that looks like. And I also wanted to say thank you to Alexis and Bruce for attending the Williamson County Children's Advocacy Center groundbreaking ceremony two weeks ago, I think, yes. For those that don't know, it's an organization that's dear to my heart. I know that's served some of our students in Leander ISD, so I was very, very glad and important that you guys came. I appreciate it.
Last week too, I went on a few campus visits as well. Whitestone, Knolls, and Running Brushy Middle School. I also did the, so it's, I like those, going on those site visits or the school visits because you get to talk to the teachers, see the students, and the programs in action, and just form relationships and connections that way. For the campus visit, while I also attended part of the Vista Ridge High School Avid Revalidation Tour, and got to see their Avid in action there, and it's really embedded, even for their non-Avid students. They're really picking up some of those Avid skills as well. So, that was very delightful to see, and they did get their, they did get revalidated and recognized as an Avid demonstration school. So, that was part of it, and then there was also, I think a few of us were at Winkley Elementary for their Volunteer Recognition Day on Valentine's Day. So, it was a busy week, and then we also, a few of us also went to the Military Ball as well, so it's a busy, busy week. Just making connections everywhere.
And yes, those site, campus site visits are just the things that really fill the bucket when you get to see learning in action and see the excitement. It was great to have, be there for the volunteer breakfast at Winkley. Just the importance that volunteers and PTA play in making everything happen in our campus. Running Brushy was a pleasure, really looking at those bilingual classes, and how we're really incorporating Spanish language in those classes was impressive. I do think one of the highlights was the Military Ball on Friday. And during the Military Ball, they give cheers and make a toast with our sparkling cider, right? With our sparkling cider, and it's just so impressive how, you know, we know our Lone Star Company ROTC is the best in the state, but when you see students running a program like that and with that type of precision, it is phenomenal. During the program, when they're giving cheers, they're like, "Cheers to, you know, to the US Army. Cheers, cheers to the Air Force. Cheers." And they call out the cadet, and it was interesting because I was sitting there, and they're like, "Cadet Delucia." And I was like, "Hey, that's my last name. There's not many of those." And my son gave, he said cheers to the Board of Trustees and y'all's support of programs like this. So, it was really awesome and special for me as a mom and as a Board of Trustee, so.
I just wanted to, I was at a lot of the site visits and the ball as well, and it was truly special, and it does fill our bucket. And one of the cadets, I was saying thank you to him before we left, and he was like, "Well, we are honored to have you here because you support us all year long." And it was just like, "Incredio." So, it was really awesome to have like, those outstanding students that realize like, we support them when they're not looking, but it was so great to be included in their event.
Just one little thing, Leaf is sponsoring, still sponsoring tickets for the Cirque du Soleil OVO show that runs through this weekend, so I'm going Saturday, which will be really cool. The other thing was that Vista Ridge runs their science fair, and of course, this year had to be virtual. There were 65 students that went from the Vista Ridge Science Fair to the Regional Science Fair, and the awards are tonight, so we'll see what happens next for some of those students. And I know that some of them got nominated for a special award. My youngest got interviewed by three lieutenants from either the Space Force or the Air Force yesterday. So, just to hear them talk confidently about their project and how they were able to, you know, 3D print rocket nozzles and measure thrust and all of the things that I don't really understand, but just to hear the level of confidence... of the things that I don't really understand, but just to hear the, the level of confidence that, that they were able to show in their project speaks volumes to our teachers. So I just want to give a shout out to all the science teachers at Vista Ridge.
There was one more I forgot. I also spent quite a bit of Saturday at the Destination, Saturday morning, at the Destination Imagination outing there in, yeah, it was in Round Rock. And Leander ISD had a ton of teams there and really, really just showed up and did really, really well. So shout out to everybody that participated in the Destination Imagination Tournament out there this past weekend.
Board members, I echo, I've been on some of these campus visits. It was the Shaw Day. We got to see the avid demonstration. It was, I think the thing that I keep thinking about is the hope and the excitement of our students and our teachers on campus. And yet, it's still, teachers will be honest, principals will be honest, this is a hard year. It was harder than COVID, y'all, and we know that. And so thank y'all for being out there, showing support, love. Our campuses still need that encouragement and affirmation. I would argue more so right now. So thank y'all so much for getting out there. Any other remarks? Okay, we'll move on to our citizen comments portion of the agenda. Please note, there are other ways that you can communicate with the board, but this agenda item is going to be set aside here for us during the meeting to hear from our community. We're restricted in the ways we can interact with you during this portion of the meeting per our board operating procedures and policy BED Local, which states the board should not deliberate or make decisions regarding any subject that is not on the posted agenda. Therefore, please note, the format's not going to be a conversation or back-and-forth discussion. We'll ask your comments. Respect that limitation, and as such, please refrain from directing comments about an individual by name who would not be able to respond. Our board operating procedures enumerate further requests. I'm going to sum up by saying we encourage polite and professional conduct. We ask that the audience and those participating help us maintain the decorum of this meeting, and as such, there should be no outburst of verbal demonstrations during citizen comments. Each speaker has up to three minutes this evening, and it is my intention that we will respect and honor each speaker's time. With that being said, remember that when the timer counts down, please wrap up your last word as that chime is going because the microphone does cut off shortly after the time goes. And remember to direct remarks to the, to the board, not to the audience. Speaker one, you're up first. Hence the number one.
First of all, thank you Superintendent Gearing and the Leander ISD Board of Trustees for being here today. Many Leander ISD students, parents, teachers, and staff were surprised to learn that the district plans to end early release days for the 2022-2023 school year. As you know, I drafted a petition on change.org that now has 222 signatures. Early release days are enormously valuable to students, teachers, and staff. They help busy teachers who need our support. Students also need the time to finish schoolwork and/or to de-stress. It also would help students who are behind, or the many LISD students who face time crunches. I have heard from some about the need for an extended schedule for special needs students, and this is a valid concern, but many other students also have time accommodations, and early release days benefit them. Although I think that we could come to an agreement on this. I also heard from some parents whose schedules don't fit early release days. This is also a good point. It might be possible to identify a compromise where on early release days, students who can be released earlier are able to go, but students who need to stay in school can do so with a smaller staff. As a proud member in the band, I know early release days can make a huge difference in our ability to do well, especially if we are taking advanced classes. Early release days help students to avoid turning in assignments late, losing sleep to get things done by deadlines, and help us arrive to school the next day refreshed and ready to learn. Many people were surprised about the decision to end early release days. I think that there are process reasons why it would be good to reconsider, so a wider circle can be involved in finding the right solutions. Many teachers also wrote comments on the petition about why they would like early release days to continue. An LISD mom wrote me, "My daughter has ADHD and is in all advanced classes in her middle school. She intends to enroll in the IBAT program at LHS next year. That 90-minute break midweek has given her so much relief." From another parent, "I'm in favor of that which supports our teachers, staff, and students the most. There's no one-size-fits-all that would work for everyone, so some outside-the-box solutions are called in for this instance." From a teacher, "It helps so much to allow teachers to stay as caught up as possible without having to take work home every weekend." Another parent on health benefits, "I can do appointments without having to pull kids from school." Another LISD teacher, "Sadly, I don't feel like teacher voices were represented well in this decision. Please consider bringing them back." Another teacher, "As a teacher, these hours were very valuable, and time needed to play with my team and get things graded instead of using my off-contract hours, hours that are mine and that I don't get paid for. In future years, even if the new schedule does get passed, there are still ways to have an early release schedule accommodate everyone. Thank you for your time."
Excellent job. Thank you, Speaker number one. All right, Speaker number two.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Pogson, and sorry, I don't feel quite as organized today. It's been a day. So I don't consider it ethical for me to go and report to Williamson County Commissioner's Court what, what I've viewed of your process of review, of reviewing books, so, without telling you what I'm going to tell them, because that's just not right. So I have, and I'll have to email this to you, but I've collected information about how things have not been, you don't seem to have a clear policy for request for review of library materials. You do have a policy that says what, that it's going to be compared against, but you had a committee get together and then review a book, and through that committee, there were only two of the, two of them were just parents. And then you use staff members as parents and say there were four parents, when really it's overstacked with staff members. And then there'll be, on this review, there was a librarian, which is one of the requirements, but then one of the people, the note takers on the, in the meeting, is that person's boss. So that doesn't seem ethical to me. It seems like you should reconsider that. Let's see, what else? There's... The questions that they go through in this review don't have anything to do with the policy. The policy states what needs to be, you know, at, what the policy is, you're referring it against. And then they ask them different questions, and they don't have those questions. So I will email you all the supporting evidence I have before I take this to Williamson County Court, which I hope to do very soon. And I just, if you reviewed the books already against EF policy during the KKK, then are you just doing the same thing over again? Where is this policy? What, what, what is the process? It is not clear at all. And that's the one ask that the Williamson County Court had was, you know, so with the little time I have left, I also want to just say, I don't hate public school. I know a lot of people talk about who I am, people who don't know me at all. I don't hate public school. If I did, I could walk away from this. I got no dog in this hunt. I could just walk away and not care, but I do care, and I don't want to just walk away and let it get run down to the ground. I don't want to stop money coming from you, to you, but it's not going to affect your, your job. Sorry.
Thank you. All right, Speaker number three.
I came tonight to be positive, but I'm not going to be able to do that, so I apologize for that. But this lady right here that just spoke, "Parents are looking for proper literature." That's what they want, and that's what they're going to get, and that's it. That's all I'm going to talk about that. But I want to recognize some things tonight. I wasn't even going to talk about any of this stuff, but the only African-American lady on this board came in with no mask, and then when she sat down and got herself organized, she put one on. Now, my personal opinion on that is that you should be able to put a mask on. It's your, it's your right. It's your personal right, but that is something I want to recognize with you, ma'am. So that's, all the germs that you carried all the way to the seat, you just got COVID. Okay, so anyway, that's one thing. Second thing, while standing after the pledge, we have a moment of silence. People behind us decided to shush the gentleman beside me twice because he made, he, he had a prayer for everybody in this room. Okay, so I, I find that very rude and inconsiderate, but I've worked in this district, and I'm going to tell you something, that is a form of bullying, and that's a problem in this district. I've seen it firsthand. And I worked for the district for three years, years ago, so that was about five years ago. So it's progressively gotten worse. It comes from home, too, really. Third thing, Pride Week. Can someone in this room tell me what there is to be proud about that? I swear, if you can tell me, I'd probably kiss your feet. Okay, so there's absolutely nothing to be proud about that. The majority of students and parents do not want a Pride Week. Okay, if I had to say anything, they want a Christian Week. Okay, there's no room, there's no place for this. This is something that you need to put outside the school. We need to get back to business. We need to get back to the failures that we've had for the last two years. We need the basic School board members, I've done a lot of research on this, trust me. I'm right about this, too. I honor you guys that talked about the Military Ball. My husband is in charge of one of the schools, I won't mention it, over at Round Rock, and thank you so much for recognizing that because these guys do work very hard to, to, to make that happen. So thank you for that. But as school board members, while you're mingling around in that school that you're visiting, you need to make sure that the school is honoring the rules that you put out. That's very important to understand, because something I've recognized, I looked this up, the pajama wearing that's going on in the schools, y'all kind of gave them a little waiver on that, but that needs to stop because children need to understand how to dress for school and be professional, because when they graduate, they need to look professional. When they get jobs, they need to look professional. So this is something that you guys need to understand. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Speaker number four.
As a parent, your child's trust is one of the most effective tools you have in guiding them into healthy, well-adjusted adults. This week, our state officials placed the government in the middle of that relationship, setting up a future of increased adolescent isolation and irreparable damage to children, their families, and our community. I can't even begin to imagine that fear, the pain, the devastation of our trans students right now. My heart breaks for gender-affirming parents who fear allowing their child to simply exist may also result in the disruption of their family unit. So tonight, I'd like to give a well-deserved thank you to the Leander ISD staff members who do create and maintain a safe environment for our LGBTQIA2S+ students and their families. Thank you to the Gender and Sexuality Alliances across the district, those who provide resources to students on your campus, those who rock their fabulous rainbow logos and flags, the GSAs whose members beam with pride when they speak of your club. It warms my heart to see our students protect each other. Thank you to the GSAs who practice discretion when it comes to your members. I love that Leander GSAs share books, film, and TV shows with LGBTQIA2S+ representation, and even teach each other about historical figures who lived their lives despite the heteronormative expectations of their time. I want our students and families to know that there is a safe space in Leander ISD. Thank you to my fellow educators who protect kids. I encourage you to continue to let your students know that your classroom is a space where even the most marginalized are forever protected. Silence on these issues shames our community. Instead, support our teachers, affirm our families, and protect our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number five. Speaker number six.
Good evening. Thank you to Dr. Gearing and the Board of Trustees for the opportunity to speak. I am a parent and teacher in LISD, and I would like to address the current climate in our school district with the lack of respect and trust shown to our district employees and educators. Having come from a family of educators and school board members, I've been shocked to see the lack of respect given to educators the past few years. Our middle school and high school educators have been accused of teaching pornography, critical race theory, sex education, and inappropriate social-emotional learning. I'm curious if these critical community, community members question other professors with professions with the same fury. Do they trust and believe doctors, police officers, engineers, computer scientists? Do they also interrogate these same professionals and try to tell them how to do their job? Teachers have earned college degrees to work in this underpaid and undervalued profession that educates your children. Yet, our competency is being constantly questioned while being asked to do more than ever before. I don't have any colleagues that became teachers to harm and indoctrinate children. Indoctrination is a word that you hear often during these school board meetings. Access does not equal indoctrination. Let me say that again. Access does not equal indoctrination. Having access to young adult literature does not mean we are teaching pornography. If you have a cable TV or a cellphone, you too can be accused of teaching pornography. Teaching history is not the same as teaching critical race theory. Offering sex education with LGBTQ definitions or asking if students would prefer to be addressed by a different pronoun is not going to turn your child gay or transgender. The "In God We Trust" signs that a community member donated to each school has not converted anyone to Christianity. Access is not the same as indoctrination. A speaker last week complained of our district's social-emotional learning curriculum and that her child was bored. I'm sorry, her child doesn't want to learn about empathy and communication. Because of this pandemic, our students have been separated from their teachers and classmates for almost two years. Some have forgotten how to act in social and school settings. Social-emotional skills are some of the most important learning for our students right now. They need coping skills, just like many adults. Her child may not need it, but that's the whole point of public education. We educate all students. We do not have a lot of choice about what we teach. The Texas Education Agency dictates the content of our classes, not local school boards. If you don't like what's being taught in our schools, talk to the TEA. They control what is taught. Are you curious about what we teach? Feel free to read the first, the grade-level teaks and curriculum documents for our district. Public schools must educate all children. Let's look at the community as a whole.
Thank you. Speaker number seven.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Mike Sanders, and I want to begin tonight by congratulating you. This is now the second meeting in which the vast majority of you are no longer wearing those silly face masks, and I want to say thank you for disposing of those pretentious things. It was, as one speaker spoke a little earlier, people come into this meeting not wearing any mask, and they don't put it on until the cameras turn on. And, you know, those of us who are here watching this charade, we know that, but people at home, they don't know that because they only see what's on the, on the camera. So at any rate, thank you for, for getting rid of the face masks. I'd also like to say that, you know, this room is divided into basically two halves. On one side... On one side are staff members. There's roughly over 20 staff members here. And out of all of them, only one is wearing a face mask. On the other side is the community members. And out of the community members, there's about a half a dozen that are wearing a face mask. Nobody else is wearing face masks. And so, you know, people at home, because we're stuck in a corner and the camera is facing the corner, they don't see that. But if we were standing right out in front of the crowd, everybody would see that no one here is wearing face masks. Very few, only a handful of people are wearing face masks. And so, just want to give reassurance to those parents out there that, you know, that your school leadership, even though, as far as I know, they're still requiring face masks, they're not wearing them themselves. And so, I hope that the requirement for students and teachers to wear face masks is removed. I know of one substitute teacher who, well, she wanted, she applied to be a substitute teacher, but she was turned down because she wouldn't wear a face mask. And she received written correspondence from LISD administration saying, "You can't work for us because you won't wear a face mask," which, of course, is against the law. But I want to thank you for disposing of those. And I want to say that I hope that freedom is back to stay and that, you know, as much as you folks enjoy your freedom, you'll also allow teachers and staff to enjoy their freedom in the classrooms and students as well. And I want to thank you for that. And also, I want to mention that when you report the student performance, it would be nice if they're a little, if it was a little more honest in the reporting. When you say that 70% of students are either approaching grade level or above grade level, that's a little bit misleading. It'd be a lot easier to say 30% are failing and are not even approaching grade level. That would be a little more honest. Because approaching grade level doesn't mean you're on grade level. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
All right, thank you. Speaker number eight.
Thank you to the superintendent, the board members, the teacher's staff and staff of LISD, and the Leander Police Department, who have protected our family, previously mentioned sometimes from people who visit these board meetings. And I want to thank you for improving the environment of the board meetings quite a bit over the past few weeks and months. As you know, our daughter was interested in addressing the board on early release days. And so, we found out about that a few months ago. And, you know, teachers were kind of, some of them were not happy about it, some of the students as well. She thought she had some ideas about how to make that better, and so she wanted to come and talk to parents. And the thing that I discovered was that there were a lot of threats. There's a lot of intimidation, a lot of harassment that matches what's outside. And I've got to tell you that what's outside is really, really, really ugly. And some of the people in the room participate in that stuff outside as well. So it can be scary for people. But you have done quite a bit to make it much, much better, and it is much, much appreciated that you've done that. But I would argue that the work is undone. After the last board meeting, when you heard from my daughter, we heard from some of those same people who say ugly things. And really clearly, they wanted to bully her out of the meeting and bully all children out of the meeting so that they could continue their ugly tactics they've already done. And that was not a pleasant conversation, either in them threatening to do certain things like reading things in front of her that she didn't consent to or other kind of ominous messages or things like that. It's kind of upsetting as a parent when that sort of thing happens. So it is good that the environment is better tonight, but you still have people not honoring decorum, praying loudly, getting in the way of other people during the moment of silence. Their relationship to God doesn't matter to these people. Our relationship to God doesn't matter to these people. Whatever our moment of silence is, they want to talk over that, and they think that they're entitled to do that. That kind of thing goes on and is a problem. But more importantly is the kinds of things that happen in the outside of the board meeting but happen with the school district. Some of you are allied with people who truly believe in white genocide theory. That's a fact. And some of you, a small number of you, have actually taken those people and appointed them to school committees. And you may not know that. But what I would ask you to do is exercise greater due diligence. Because those kinds of people should not exercise power over our children. They look at my daughter, and they see the living embodiment and proof that white genocide is happening now. And they've told me that. You should not be putting people like that on committees or having anything to do with them. Don't take their money. And do everything you can to try to separate the district from that. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number nine.
Hi. My name is Michelle Kane. My pronouns are she/her. I'm a parent, community member, and have been an educator in this district since 2001. I'm a department head on several committees and in charge of Destination Imagination for our campus. Going to give a quick shout out to our two teams making it to state, Go Plastic Bread Cremes and La Team. I also sponsor or co-sponsor a few student clubs, the Ukulele Club, Student Council, and our GSA. Our GSA started a few years ago as a safe place for people in the LGBTQ+ community to just be. A student started it. Since then, it's had a few iterations, but never a lack of students interested, attending, and leading it. I'm just the sponsor, I'm just there. What has never changed is the number of students who talk about the lack of love and acceptance they are feeling in our community and at home. I hear frequent stories of kids trying to come out to their parents and being shut down. Stories of kids being ridiculed or made fun of by other students in and out of school. Stories of adults in our schools and community who look down on these kids for who they are and don't give them the love and acceptance they deserve. Consider this. How might you react to constantly receiving negative messages about your very existence? Here's some troubling data, a little trigger warning here. LGBTQ+ youth are four times more likely to seriously consider suicide and five times more likely to make a plan for suicide and to attempt it than their peers. Five times. These kids are human. Regardless of whether you agree with their gender or sexual orientation, they are human first. And they should be afforded the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness along with the rest of us. Here's another statistic. LGBTQ+ youth who come from highly rejecting families are 8.4 times as likely to have attempted suicide as those who report no or low levels of family rejection, meaning that all you have to do is accept them. As a parent and educator, you have the right, you have to wonder, what we can do to help these kids? What we as a community can do? I mean, I wonder that. But the good thing is, we do have an answer. The number one thing that helps to drop the rate of suicide in these kids, parental acceptance. And if they can't get that, because we all know we can't force families to accept them, the acceptance of the other adults in their lives, and those would be the teachers and the people in the schools. So then you might wonder, how do we do that? Acceptance seems like a nebulous idea, but it's not. The easiest way to start showing that acceptance is to use the names and pronouns that they ask for. That's it. It's simple. It makes them feel seen, which is what everyone deserves. To not accept these kids for who they are is akin to denying them life, especially with the suicide rates, as I mentioned above. To the teachers and parents out there listening, especially those who might say something like, "Love the sin or hate the sin," these kids need to know you love and accept them for who they are. In the words of one of my former students, "You can't be afraid to hear the word gay or lesbian or transgender. We exist." I see them, I love them, and I give them those mom hugs when they need them, as do a handful of other teachers at my school. But we should not be the only ones. We shouldn't be the only ones telling them they deserve to be loved. As a community, as a district, we need to stand up proudly and let them know that we support them and they are loved. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Speaker number 10.
Here we go. Sorry to have a chance to print this, if you don't mind if I read it. Evening, members of the board. How are you, neighbors? I want to first start with a quote by somebody you may have heard of, Vladimir Putin. This is out of MEMRI.org. It's translation from one of the speeches he gave recently. And it came from Jordan Peterson's resignation letter. And he, as you well know, resigned recently from the University of Toronto and has some bearing on what I'm going to talk about tonight. Says, "The advocates of so-called 'social progress' believe they are introducing humanity to some kind of new and better consciousness. The only thing that I want to say now is that their prescriptions are not new at all. It may come as a surprise to some people, but Russia has already been there." Blah, blah, blah. "Looking at what is happening in a number of Western countries, we in Russia are amazed at what we see as the domestic practices, which we fortunately have left, I hope, in the distant past. The fight for equality and against discrimination is turned into aggressive dogmatism bordering on absurdity." The resignation letter was primarily about DEI, and that's how it connects to you. All right? So if you want to know what the sickness is that is sort of infesting this community, I would recommend that you read, urge, in fact, that you read that resignation letter. It's an interesting diatribe, but also very well-written in most parts. So, once you've read that, you will understand perhaps why he describes the education community, at least the high-level education community, as a stunningly corrupt enterprise. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that you guys are a stunningly corrupt enterprise, but you're employing people that are coming out of that system, and that's not good. All right? So we have a lot of good teachers in this district. There's no doubt about that. They come to you and they beg you for money every meeting and with good cause, right? They probably need a lot more money. They probably need you to spend money on that more than they want you to spend money on DEI training, which is a waste. All right? So stupid ideas matter, and I guess that's why I came here tonight, just to make sure that you understand that. Okay, so November is coming up. I guess we've got four of you running, and hopefully they'll make some progress on changing the character of this board. Anybody that is not serious enough to understand what DEI is, and CRT for that matter, right, another pine bark beetle, really needs to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number 11.
Hi there, everyone. Everyone's doing great tonight. I feel great. You know, the energy in this room is a lot better than the last couple of times, and I love it. We got a short group, but it's like the energy in the air is good, and I love it. I love it, I love it. Bad Books, I agree with, oh, what's her name? I forget her name, but I'm Paul, if you guys don't know. Come down to these meetings. These meetings are great, because I agree with that gal, the books you guys set the system up. It's very hard to get these books off, and I think that's intentional, of which, yeah, we'll be talking to Commissioner's Court about that. I was just saying how lack of transparency, you have very few people that can raise their voice from the community members, which we always talk about, the community members, that's what you guys are supposed to represent. But that's really not why I'm here tonight. I'm here again to talk about the overall disappointment and the overall debt that we carry. You know, in the summer, we approved a minus $25 million budget. And by my estimate, we're operating on a minus $50 million budget right now. Tell me if I'm wrong. I don't have access to numbers. Am I right? Am I wrong? I'd love to know the truth. Because these numbers, this debt is real, and a savings will have to happen in order to pay for this. You can't just magically come up with $100 million, $200 million, $500 million, because the idea of you just use the money that you would get that year to pay it off. Well, we only make $380 million a year currently. And if we do have the growth that we have, maybe if, maybe we get up to $700 million a year, of which if we used every single penny we had, in five years, we would pay off our debt. But that means no one gets paid. There's no salary, there's no lunches, there's no school buses, no school bus drivers. So I'm here as again to remind the people, hey, come on down, regardless of what some people say, this is the safest place you would ever be for the next three minutes of your life. Come on down. Say your piece. Because I have met so many wonderful people here, friends and foes alike. I reached my hand across the aisle, and surprisingly, some have actually grabbed it and said, "What's your name? What do you do?" And I'm just like, "Well, I'm Paul, and I'm a little complicated." But I love being here. I love spending my time with you guys and reminding you, you work for us, and you work for the people, and we're actually here to help. And hopefully you will help us, too. But going back to some of the mask thing, you know, the CDC was still paying $4,000 per kid. And at 40,000 kids, that's $160 million. I had to do it like five times in the calculator, because I'm like, is that right? Because that would be one way the district could do some of the things and not worry.
All right, thank you, Speaker. We will now move on. That closes our citizen comments portion of the agenda. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Board members?
I move the board to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I second.
Have a motion from Alexis, second from Anna. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carries. We'll move on to the next item, our superintendent's report. Dr. Carey?
Thank you, Madam President. We heard about this in board member remarks, but it is always a pleasure to have board members visit our schools and see what our teachers and our students are doing on the ground. And so, we want to reflect that as often as we can. You have this picture in your packets, and I urge you to look at the faces of those children and understand what they're experiencing at these moments that are captured, just snapshot moments that are captured. But fascinating always to look at all of the children in the room and see, I always wonder what they're thinking. This is Williamson County COVID data. Good news for right now, Williamson County is right down. It's fascinating to me to watch what happens because Travis County is all over the show, and it's hard to explain why. And so, that does caution us for the future, too. I like this version of it this time because it does paint that long picture of where we've been and what this last variant looked like. And just to point out that we don't know when or if or what another variant might look like. So we continue to prepare as the numbers are down to make sure that our protocols are in place, that we're ready to face whatever's coming next. And the district cases are right down, and so we continue to be pleased to be able to offer in-person learning to all of our students. Staff numbers are better, but you'll notice, and I want to point out, that we have these spikes on Fridays mostly, when more of our staff are out than on other days of the week. And also, these numbers are about 20% higher than normal pre-COVID numbers. And so, that puts a lot of pressure on our substitute system because they have to hire a lot more people to bring into the schools to make sure that that coverage is happening. And so, when you look at the fill rates, fluctuating somewhere between 70 and 75% in the district right now with ESS, those fill rates are a significantly higher number of substitutes than we've historically had in the past. And so, the fill rate might not seem as high as we'd like it to be. We hope that we can continue to bring that fill rate up, but it is a significantly higher number of people that we're putting into those substitute positions every week. We've seen this enrollment number every time, and I've said every time that we continue to trickle up in our overall number of students, and that's true. But I wanted to bring you a slightly different perspective tonight because there's more to this picture than is presented in that graphic that we always present. So you can't see it necessarily up here, but in that bottom right corner is the number of students who've left the district between August 15th and February 10th. And that number is 1,916 students. So we did a little analysis of the lever codes of where are those students going so that we have a clearer understanding of what's actually happened. So you can see on the left-hand side of this pie chart, we've got a green and a purple slice of pie. And those are students who enroll in other Texas public schools and then in schools outside of Texas. And that's about half of those kids, so just a little shy of 1,000 of those kids. So when we take those away, because we know that they went to some other Texas public school or to a school outside of the state, and look at the 1,000 kids that are left, then we see that the majority of those have gone to homeschool, 551 of them. We've got 113 in charter schools, 118 We've got 113 in charter schools, 118 going to private school, and another 137 going to virtual school outside of ours. So that created a lot of interest for us and started to spark a lot of questions for us. And so Dr. Martinez has been doing this work, and she's put together a survey to send to all 1,000 of these families, to try to get some insight as to why did you leave? You know, what are your circumstances and your experiences now? And at some point, we hope to be able to invite those students to come back to the district, if they're missing out on some of the opportunities that we can provide in Leander ISD that they might not be receiving. This group is important, this 1,000 students, because they didn't necessarily move out of the community. A lot of these students are potentially still part of our community, although we don't know that for sure, and so that's part of what we want to find out. But if you think about this, we've got a little over, close to 2,000 students who've left the district, and a little over that number who've come into the district since the start of school. So that's a churn of over 4,000 kids in the district since August. So it just paints a slightly different picture than perhaps I've been intimating in this report up until now. Attendance is still something that we're closely monitoring and making sure that we understand. Nothing different in this slide, other than that we looked at the last seven school days, and you can see that number's getting closer to the 95% that is closer to where we'd like it to be. Of course, we budgeted at 96%. Historically, we would be at 96% attendance at this time of the year, and we're averaging just a little, probably shy of 94%. That number has been decreased because of the January numbers, and we're slowly recovering that. Part of the problem is that we don't have enough runway left in the school year to be able to move that percentage significantly higher. And so we're still looking and waiting for the commissioner to decide if he's going to do any harmless. He did some in that first six weeks, but that's also dependent on attendance rates in the second semester, and so we do not have final decision from TEA yet about how they're going to deal with ADA attendance this year. Of course, that's very closely tied to our revenue. March coming up is Celebrate Texas Public Schools Month, and so we'll be doing lots of activities across the district for that. We have In School Day SAT coming up on March 2nd for our juniors. This is a great opportunity that is not offered to all children across the state, and so it's a great privilege for our students to be able to have that opportunity to take the SAT during the school day, and certainly helps them as they prepare to get ready for their next step. Texas Educational Diagnosticians Week during the second week of March, and then of course, spring break coming up, and a couple of board meetings in there. So I want to shift gears a little bit with you, and to paint the picture of some of what's going on in our schools, and you've heard board members are visiting our schools and sharing those experiences, but I want to share some of the things that I see when I go visit schools, and it's been really, it's an incredible experience for me, and really part of my job that I love the most, when I get on campuses and get in classrooms with the kids. And I see so many fabulous things that I want to bring back to you, so I'm going to have to save some of them, and the ones I'm bringing to you are from my two visits, two campus visits today, and I'll bring some others to you from before, back at another meeting. But I had the privilege of visiting Deer Creek Elementary today, and when I arrived at the front office, and I loved this, there was nobody there to meet me. And that's a great sign to me, because Matt Colkins is the principal, was visiting with his fourth-grade team, and so I wound it up to find him, and he was talking to them about the flex time that they're implementing in fourth grade. And what this means is, the fourth-grade team as a whole has, instead of looking only after day 22, have taken the whole grade level and have taken their data, both ICE Station that you heard about from us, and MAP on the math side, and then also all of their curriculum assessments, curriculum-based assessments, and they've split their kids up into groups that group them with need. And so different teachers are taking different groups twice a week, and working with them to move those students forward in those areas of need. And so you can see, I want you to just pay attention, and you'll see it better when you look closely at these pictures from your packet, but on that dry erase board at the back, there's several of these large posted notes that are posted with what's on there, and this particular one talks about what is the purpose of flex, what is flex not, and then what are appropriate flex opportunities for each grad level, and what impact would banding grade levels together have on how they operate flex. And they do flex across all the grade levels now, and they're starting to implement that, and they were having really an animated conversation about what worked and what didn't work in this program. So just take note of this, these are fourth graders in the art classes, and they're making pinch pots out of clay, and that white powder was everywhere, on the telephone handle, on the door handles, on everything. It was fantastic. But just take note of what they're doing in that picture. You've seen this before, but I want to bring it back and just remind you, this comes from the University of Washington Center for Educational Leadership, and it's the theory of action C. And I'll just point out that at that top left, number one, it starts with students. What are students doing in the classroom? All of our principals are working with theory of action, that's been part of what we've really focused on this year, and they're looking at what are students actually doing in the classroom, and asking the question, what needs to change? And then saying, well, if students are doing this, what are the teachers doing that is causing that to happen? What are the principal doing that's causing the teachers to act that way? And then we can start with our theory of action to say, well, if principals do X, then teachers will do Y, and that will get students to do this thing that we want them to do. And so on that board that you saw back here, and that dry erase board at the back, I took pictures of some of those, and I'll point out that on the right, it says, what do we want in classrooms? Empowered learners, safe environment, reflection, deeper learning, collaboration. The middle one says, what do we want teachers to do, if that's what we want, and it lists all of these things and actions for teachers. And the one on the left says, what do campus leaders need to do in order to make that environment possible? So we're seeing this theory of action in practice at our schools, and it's working very well. Then we stepped out in the hall, and this group of first graders was sitting on the floor, well, actually, they were all over the place. It was fantastic. They have these very, very nice-looking carts, that I would like to have one in my house, actually, full of Makerspace materials, and they were doing what's called a STEMathy challenge. And I'll read to you what, I'm not going to read you that whole thing, but I'll read to you what is supposed to happen. This is about two rabbits, Fluffy and Fluffy, who've got lost in the forest, and they're surrounded on four sides by different obstacles, and their job is to figure out how to get them out, but they have to do two things. They have to design an instrument that will help them find their way, and they will have to then create a vehicle which will help them get safely out. And so these first graders had designed a compass, which they'd correctly put the four cardinal directions on, and placed it on top of a hoverboard, which they were creating out of all these materials, which was going to fly Fluffy and Fluffy out of their predicament. And they could clearly articulate exactly what the problem was on the SEL side, on the empathy side, and they could clearly articulate what they were doing to solve the STEM problem on the science and the math side. And it was fantastic to see first graders completely independently creating and solving some really pretty complex problems for their age level. And then I had the privilege of going to Renning Brushy Middle School, and by chance, because it was about to be passing period, ended up in the IC's office. And on the left-hand side, what you'll see is a list of all of the expectations for learning that the teachers brainstormed, that they wanted to really see in the classrooms. And then they affinity'd those, and I don't even need to explain that, because you now know what that is. And they created these six groups that are listed there, and then they went one step further and reduced those down to just two. And the two that they picked were questioning and productive struggle. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see what they created, and there's four of these in a quadrant. You can see the axes on the left and the bottom of this particular picture, one for each of the core areas, and they've addressed each axis, each continuum is about questioning, and then productive struggle. And it's a continuum from what happens if we don't see anything like this happening in the classroom, and what the ideal looks like. And then they're doing classroom walks with teachers. So math teachers are visiting science classrooms, and taking sticky notes and writing about one thing that they want, that they see and observe about questioning, and putting it on this continuum somewhere between it's not happening at all to this is the ideal. All those teachers put that on there, then they come together, and they talk about how can we move this particular teacher further to the right? And that's what those hot pink sticky notes are, suggestions for those teachers to move to get better at their craft. And so when you look at what that ideal looks like, number one, it's all about students and what students should be doing, which really comes to that empowerment and ownership of learning. But it's also, and I haven't discovered yet whether they started with the graduate profile and produced these, or if they produced these and they just happened to be aligned with the graduate profile, which is also distinctly possible, but almost every one of those statements is aligned to the graduate profile. And what we're finding more and more is that we're finding all these affirming behaviors happening all across our schools, aligned to the work that we've been doing in strategic plan already. And so really exciting work happening all across our campuses, as we just drop in and find these pieces. These two students are brand-new students to the district and also to the country. They've been here only several weeks. Neither of them speak any English whatsoever. This is the ESL teacher, and she's sitting in between these two. There's normally more of them, some of them didn't get to get to school today, but they're using ICE Station to learn English. And the power of ICE Station, as we explained last time, was that it takes the student to where they're at, finds out exactly where they're at, and then picks them up there and takes them forward. And these students were totally engaged, they had headphones on, they were clicking on words, and that the computer was helping to enunciate those words for them, and then they were repeating those back and really starting to engage in learning the language. And so using powerful tools that take these students all the way down to their language level, even though they're middle-school students, they may be operating at a first-grade English level, they're all the way back there with the software, and it's picking them up where they are and taking them where they need to be. Very powerful. So remember what those fourth-grade students were doing, making pinch pots? So this is what's happening at Renning Brushy Middle School with the pinch pots on the left-hand side, and just incredible work happening with their creativity, with their technique and skill. So anyway, on the right-hand side, these are fantasy houses that students were making out of Makerspace materials, and so they've got pebbles and cardboard and bits of grass that they found and all kinds of things, but just incredible work. These were all on display, of course, for the fifth graders who were visiting from the Vida pattern today, and so that was great to see our middle-school students experience, our elementary students, our fifth graders who are up and coming, experiencing what that middle school looks like. And here again, I just need you to look at the face of that child on the right-hand side, and the depth of thinking that's happening as he's trying to explain what he's learning. And as you dig into this particular image, if you look at every child in this photograph, you'll see the level of engagement that was captured just in that particular random moment. So thank you for allowing me to ramble somewhat about the incredible things that are happening all across Leander ISD in our classrooms. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Board members?
No question. I just want to say, in my house, everyone knows that my three pinch pots are like Mama's Fine China, and I love them, I can turn them upside down and see the initials on them from the past 20 years, but none of them look like that. So I'm like, oh, we need to step up the pinch pot game around here. But no, that's pretty special. I think that's all of us that have grown up in LISD, we have all our little pinch pots, and we love those pinch pots.
I just wanted to say thank you for highlighting the Makerspace. Makerspace, my kids like to say to me, is trash is cool again. So we don't throw anything away at our house. But that's one thing I love that I see on my campus visits, is that is one thing that is, I think, a constant in every campus, and what I love about it, it's different at every campus, and what the kids are making out of it, and just how they're utilizing different objects and things to make whatever their heart desires, and I, and it's not even at the elementary level, you're seeing it at the middle-school level too, which I didn't think a Lego wall at a middle-school level would be a big deal, but it is a huge deal. So thank you for highlighting that. It's, I think that's one of the most coolest things that we've implemented in LISD in the last couple of years.
All right, board members, that'll conclude this agenda item. We'll go ahead and take a little bit out of order. We have a special guest speaker with us this evening for our governance, so we'll pull up our legislative priorities discussion next on our agenda. Colby Nichols will be presenting.
Well, all I have to say is Flippy and Floppy would have been stuck if I would have been trying to solve that problem. So there's been a lot happened since we last had a visit. Want to first start by commending the Legislative Committee and their help, and kind of designing sort of this initial draft of your legislative priorities. You'll notice that this is significantly different from the way we did it last time, but I think it's an improved process, and it really helps us kind of narrow it down to the items that are most important to you all. That being said, kind of where we go from tonight is we are going to leave this with you, no decision to be made tonight, give you some opportunity to kind of marinate on it and have a conversation with the administration at your leisure about things that maybe you see that are not what you would think the district needs to focus on, or perhaps there's additional things that you think the district should focus on, and just some feedback there. And then we'll come back in March, I believe that's right, right, Trish? We're thinking March, to kind of finalize this document so that we can start sharing the basics. I did want to hit on a couple of different things. We've seen now, there's not a lot of policy talk going on right now, obviously, it's campaign season, right? But we have seen a couple of things come from the governor's office, taxpayer bill of rights, parents' bill of rights, and so I think there's a couple of different things that we can take away from those two documents. I will, I will say that as someone that does this for a living, the documents are the documents, but until we get it in statute, it really doesn't mean much, right? And so it's real easy to pick apart ideas, or support, or oppose something, but again, until we see it in statute, we need to be careful about overgeneralizations. But I will say, there's some things in there that this district and other fast-growth districts, especially in the taxpayer bill of rights, have had issue with. One in particular would be the two-thirds supermajority required by both the board itself when going for a bond in May, but also the voters. So that differing standard in the past, that has been an issue for districts like yours. It does have on there reducing school property tax rates. Again, every session, we have this conversation, and no one's necessarily going to oppose that, right? But we need to make sure that we understand the details of what that does to school finance as a whole and the revenue situation there. Parental bill of rights, this one may be more so than even the other one, the details are what's really going to matter. Funny enough- Funny enough, in the parents' bill of rights is this large section about student data and the need to keep student data safe. And it's almost like this one board in Texas had this great idea and then all of a sudden it just took off. So, you know, there's some language in there that troubles me because you all know the difficulty that we had and, and how many players there are in the student data field. And the way that the, at least the, the campaign piece was worded is it almost is keeping it, I guess, isolated to Texas companies. But as you all know, as I said last time, I've never, I've never had an issue where Microsoft, Google, Apple, Amazon were all wanting to talk to me about this bill, right? So this is obviously not just a, a Texas issue. And so we just, again, the devil's going to be in the details and, and we'll, we'll see what that looks like when we actually have statutory language. But wanted to bring that up. The other sort of immediate needs, so we kind of did this in two strands. We did immediate legislative needs. So that, those are again, things that we're going to kind of target this session really hard. And then the collaborative impact. And collaborative impact is really items that you are, are not going to be alone on and, and something that throughout your communications and conversations with other trustees and community members are things that you know you're going to have some help on as we move forward. So first is sort of a carryover from something we had as a long-term goal last, last go-around, which is full and adequate funding for full day pre-K. We all know what full day pre-K does for kids. There was another study that came out this month that talked about minority children. We see an increased enrollment and attendance rate from children that have full day pre-kindergarten rather than part day. But that requires personnel, resources and space. And so, you know, talking with your, your finance folks and with Dr. Gearing, I mean, it's obvious that in districts across the state, this is a problem. It's obvious that that funding's not matching up with what it actually costs to have those programs.
And Colby, funding used to be there for high-quality pre-K. And then that funding was taken away for full-day high-quality.
That's correct. The second one, this is a conversation that we've been having for a long time, but it's really ramping up, especially with most recent issues with COVID and even this year with the, the attendance issues we've had. Transition school funding from an attendance-based system to an enrollment-based system. I will warn you, the fiscal note on that has always been sort of the, the stop. But there is an increased calling for this kind of, this kind of change. And so we'll see where we can get on that. The, the next one is sort of a play off of your, your previous position on local control. And essentially it says, ensure decision-making encourages participation by and prioritizes the needs of parents, teachers, staff and trustees as identified by the education code and local governance matters. Again, keeping the community first and what you decide here in Leander versus what is decided in Austin as the priority. That's kind of where your Legislative Committee felt. We should morph that from the local control conversation. Increase funding for hiring staff and providing professional development necessary to meet mental health-related needs. This is also a carryover. It's a little differently worded, but obviously that remains to be an issue that we need help with and need to consider pursuing. Continue to monitor the student data privacy.
Colby, sorry, we might want to put in there and say something for the committee to think about increased spending for hiring and retaining.
Yes. And I will tell you, not just on the mental health front, but the teacher pipeline issue is going to be a very, there's going to be a lot of discussion in the interim about that issue once the primaries are over. I think you're going to see possibly some interim charges on that. Because what we have now, if it was a problem five years ago, it's, it's an epidemic at this issue, at this point. So I think we're going to see a lot of discussion and I, you know, we're going to see everything from ideas about loan forgiveness to changes in certification to more compensation. All of those are going to be thrown at the table and it's all going to depend on where we're at in the next legislative session. I will say from, from a budgetary perspective, the state of Texas is set to be in a great spot, especially with domestic oil doing what it's doing right now. And the anticipation as we move forward is that there's going to be a lot of money in the state once again. So again, depends on priorities of state leaders. Continue to monitor the student data privacy bill. That was, it ultimately became a part of House Bill Three because we, we passed it as an amendment. I still am receiving some, some information from companies. There hasn't been a lot done by the agency at this point. If you remember, we delayed that enactment of that piece of the legislation until much later. And so I think with everything that's going on, it's kind of been on the back burner. But talking to some of the larger companies, we just all want to make sure that we have a seat at the table. And so we're going to continue to work on that. And again, we'll see, since the framework is already there, I could foresee from a statutory perspective that our piece of statute is where they start on potentially the, the governor's priority. So we'll see how that works. And then the last one is also a carryover from last time, last time. And that is supporting, protecting students and parents by ensuring that special ed advocates essentially have the proper training. And as you remember, we, we did get a bill filed. It didn't get a hearing and we all committed to work on that, the interim. And we are going to continue to do that and hopefully be able to, to get somewhere. I think, and we've had this conversation many times. I think there's, there was a lot of people that didn't really understand what the bill actually did, especially on the advocate side. And once they understood what it was trying to accomplish, they, they came around. But when you're in the heat of a session, that's hard to, hard to get, get moving. So on the, any, any questions on immediate legislative need before I move on to collaborative? Okay. On the collaborative impact, some of you are familiar with some of the stuff that Raise Your Hand Texas has done regarding accountability. They've put together this accountability council. Their polls were pretty clear from the Charles Butt Foundation about how people are feeling about accountability right now and, and the one test at the end of the year essentially. And public opinion is sort of down on standardized testing in regards to that way of doing it, right? And so I think you're going to see sort of a move, or at least some lawmakers move to potentially try to make the system more comprehensive and holistic. Whether that means, you know, what that means, I don't know. You know, does that mean removing high stakes? Does it mean having more tests throughout the year rather than one at the end of the year? Possibly, right? I think all the ideas are on the table. And again, I wouldn't be surprised if we saw at least some discussion about this in the interim, on the interim charge side. And then finally, which speaks directly to the taxpayer bill of rights, oppose differing standards for bond and tax eradication elections than other elections. Keep the elections the way that people are used to. You know, we need to remain, or continue to have education before the ballot box, not at the ballot box. So these long ballot language bills, I, I don't necessarily foresee that as an issue as much as the two-thirds supermajority and those sorts of discussion and potentially eliminating May as an option, as an election date in the future. So that's kind of where we landed. Appreciate Dr. Gearing as well weighing in on these as we move throughout the process and, and hopefully we'll have a good dialogue before we get back in March and y'all will have an opportunity to kind of spitball maybe some other ideas.
Colby, I appreciate the explanation. I have one topic that's not on this list that I've asked about before that I, I would like to see some discussion around. And I don't know that I have an expectation necessarily that it could be moved legislatively in the next go-around, but I think it's an area of discussion that needs publicity, needs discussion, needs data.
Okay.
And that goes to the weights, the formula weights for GOs, specifically funding in the metroplex versus districts in Houston versus districts in Austin and the assumptions about cost of living that were in those weights when they were initially adopted. They have fundamentally changed. We're adversely affected by those changes. It makes it even more difficult for districts in central Texas, I think, to meet their hiring expectations or hiring objectives than it does for districts in the metroplex, for instance. And so this is a difficult one, I know, because it's, you know, give to some and take away from others. And it's bound to be unpopular with just about everybody, except maybe those districts that need some more, right? But I think it's, I think it's a reality that we have to address is the assumptions that were used to, to create those original weights have changed or the realities have changed from those original assumptions. I don't know exactly how much. I've done a little bit of digging around, you know, what the, what the gaps are, what the deltas are. But I think it deserves some deeper investigation, some articulation of the, the facts as we see them. And then discussion of what it takes to right-size those so that districts across the state of Texas are in a relatively similar position when it comes to hiring and all the challenges associated with it.
Absolutely. You know, I've heard the term teachage more in the last two years than I've ever heard it before, I feel like, in terms of, and teachage being facilities that are built for teachers to live in, right? So I, I think that's a, that's a very good point and something worth discussion.
I was in a group recently that was talking about justice issue as specific to Austin and surrounding areas of losing, losing teachers and losing educators and, and never getting them in the first place because, because exactly of this. And so, and we did talk about how unpopular it's going to be with a lot of other districts. But I still, I agree with Erin that I think it's a discussion that we have to have. And at least if we're having the discussion and we're bringing attention to it, maybe somebody will listen to us, maybe someone will hear us. And at least we're looking at, maybe someone's, will consider creative alternatives of how in these type of metroplexes are we going to keep up with the rate of rent and inflation to pay educators enough to be able to live in the areas that our schools are at?
Absolutely. It occurs to me too, that the, the better economic environment in which to correct this is when the state may have a little more to play with. Because they can then sort of give to everybody, but give more to some than others to help balance this out as opposed to situations where things are tight and people really, or districts really see net negatives. So maybe now's a good time if we can get attention on it soon enough.
Yeah, I agree. And I would, I would also say that this fits in well with the teacher pipeline issue generally, rather than it being just a finance issue, right? This is a human capital issue more than it is really a finance issue. So it could plug in well there.
I just want to piggyback what you're talking about, Erin. We had a fantastic discussion at the Region 13 TASB grassroots meeting. It was all on that. And every single one trustee in that room was, we've got to figure out the cost of living. We have to retain our teachers. And I know Central Texas School Board Association, we've been having, our last meeting was all about that. Didn't really go in the direction I wanted, but, but my point is the conversations are started and I'd like to see our district take the lead in that as well. I know Trish has been talking already as the president of the Central Texas School Board Association about this. So I, just letting you know, we've been having those conversations, but I'd like to see this board take that on. I think it's very important that we lead it, lead it in this matter, or lead this matter. I can't talk.
No, well, yeah, I think you're going to find seven very passionate people that know that we, we want to get, we need to get relief funding for our teachers, our principals, our auxiliary staff. Yeah, CTSBA is talking about workforce, we're going to keep doing that. I do remember the discussion and, sorry if my terms aren't right, but it was that index that we used to use, that weight, the study wasn't done. And that's why it was so easy, I think, to remove that. So as we, yeah, as we move forward, thank you, yes. With, as we move forward, I don't know if we should necessarily go back to a CEI because the study wasn't done, because it costs money to do a study and what are all the components? And there are tons of different discussions on that. But to, to all of y'all's points, every single trustee in here wants to know, how can we look at, like you said, our human capital, our human resources? How do we take care of our teachers? And so is, where do you think we can get the most momentum? And we'll leverage voices and organizations because we know we need to get some relief for our teachers and staff and auxiliary, so.
Right. Makes complete sense.
Do you feel like, I know last session, I think it was Representative Goodwin had proposed the bill when we were, no, it wasn't last session, it was two sessions ago, of course, when we actually got to give more money to, to schools and to educators. There was talk about, as we look at the basic student allotment, adding a component on there that is a percent increase based on inflation or some type of percent increase per year? Because if we don't, if we wait another 10, 15 years to increase the basic allotment, we're going to be, you know, even further? Do you think there would be any appetite to talk about adding, you know, some type of annual increase on basic allotment?
Yeah, it's certainly a discussion worth having. You know, in my experience, the, the legislators are hesitant to do that just because they, you know, ties their hands, right? And so, but it's a worthwhile discussion and something that we need to talk about. And as, as Trish mentioned, the, the index, you know, as most of you know, I worked for Jimmy Don Acock when he started this conversation about doing something on school finance. And that's exactly, he said, we just do away with that. It was supposed to be updated, it was never updated. And so why do we even need it? You know, that was sort of the point there. And, and the reason it was never updated is because it would tie their hands, right? And so, yeah, I think, but I think it's a worthwhile discussion, just like the attendance-based system versus enrollment-based system. That is the most logical, but it also is, comes with a lot of pitfalls for the appropriations committee in the future. And all of those things, even if we got it locked in, appropriations always trumps. And so they could ultimately still, yeah, yeah.
And I'm just going to use only my Leander ISD hat, not any of the experiences or try to tap what I think other organizations are doing because I don't think anybody's asked about this, which probably means there's a reason why they haven't asked about it. But the rainy day fund, there's usually that little bit of amount that came off and it would come off for public education. It was, it was a part, right, from that severance tax from our ESF before it goes into that account. There's some there for the school fund. There were some there for the state highway fund. I'm probably not voicing this right. I'm just curious, I know we're, we want to be careful of how we address, because we don't use all that fund, but there is a lot of savings in there. Again, I don't know if those discussions are out there. So I think just as trustees, Erin started off talking about GEO, right? Let's look at the geography area. Maybe CEI is not going to work, but maybe we can look at geography. I think that's great. And, and, you know, looking at all these different components of things. Can we look at a basic allotment increase? Whatever you're hearing, if we can plug that in with our Legislative Committee on the different pieces and then whatever you think has the most merit or weight, you have seven board members who want to go out and get the community and go say, we, we need this help for our teachers, so.
Perfect. Sounds great.
So just a, a process remark really more than anything else and a reminder. So we, as a board, as a district, have these legislative priorities that we'll set and then eventually approve and, and use as we go through the interim and into the session. Lots of other organizations have their sets of priorities, TASB and CTSBA and all of those, TASSA and, and all of those. But TASB also offers, and we heard this at the grassroots meeting, the, the opportunity to submit individual items through the TASB resolution process. And so I just want to remind board members that, that there is that opportunity to do, carve out some more very specific things that might come up in, in the meantime into that TASB resolution process.
I would like to see us do a resolution. I got to attend my first TASB conference last year and I was just having so much fun. I wanted, I'm just kind of sad we didn't do a resolution. And so I'd love to see us, I'd love to see our Legislative Committee talk about that. I know we've, in our last meeting, we talked about full-day pre- I know we've, in our last meeting, we talked about full-day pre-K, because that's, you know, our pre-K program is really expanding, so I'd love to see us take that lead on it.
Bruce, can board members get you those topics?
Absolutely, yes.
So board members, if you want the full Tasby thing and you want to fill it out, you can do that, or you can just say, Bruce, here's the topic item, and y'all legislative committee, work on this and, and fill out the pieces, whichever works for you. It can be these items on here, and you might want to do more specific on direction, or restate, that's fine, or you might want to do something addition that my head keeps thinking about, HB 4545 and our reading academies. So again, if you have something off-topic, just get it to Bruce, get the legislative committee, and we'll, we'll bring it forward. Then, once we work through it, we'll bring it forward to the board for more discussion.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you, Colby. That concludes this agenda item. We're gonna move on to the Student Experience. Board members, we're gonna try to tackle two agenda items before we take a five-minute break. Will do the Student Experience, consider approval of the 2021-2022 Academic Revision Calendar. Matt, I know you're gonna be short, sweet, and to the point, I can tell you, the number one question is, what are the minutes we really need?
Well, that's what we'll answer while we talk today, Madam President. Good evening, everybody. So we are here today to talk about a recommendation for academic calendar revisions to ensure that we are meeting the requirements as established in Texas Education Code. So, back at the beginning of the month, we, as you'll all recall, we had a weather event, and we were, which necessitated closing the facilities for two days. We're bringing you a recommendation today that I think strikes the best compromise for our staff members and our community. We did, this year, build in some excess minutes. As we've talked about many times, by adding in 26 early release Wednesdays to the calendar, our, our excess minutes were a bit tighter this year. So, take middle school and elementary, for example, we have less than a full day of excess minutes. So, but we can use those. So we, like I said, we were closed for two days. First thing we do right off the bat is utilize our bad weather day, that we did build into the calendar. That's April 18th, Monday, April 18th. So, right off the bat, that takes care of the minutes for one of the days that we were closed for. So, like I said, we did, we do have some excess minutes built into our calendar. At the elementary level, we have 330 minutes built that were excess over the requirement established by Texas Education Code. That is not quite a full day. A full day in elementary for us is 435 minutes. So, in the end, what we need to look for is 105 minutes. And what we came up with as a solution was to look at two 90-minute periods, our two early releases, Wednesdays at the very end of the year, to, to ensure that we're meeting that 75,600 operational minute requirement established by, by, by Texas Education Code. We did look at other options. We looked at adding two full days back into the calendar, which we can do, we have the ability to do that. We could look, I mean, our options are somewhat limited, but they are there. We have our Monday, March 21st, day after spring break, which is set aside as a professional learning day. We could bring kids back for that day, that would get us a second day. We could add a day to the calendar. So we finished this year on, on a Thursday, May 26th, before Memorial Day weekend, and we could build that Friday, May 27th, back into the calendar. We even do have a third option, which would be to look at that last day of school, which is a half-day. As you'll remember, we have half-days on the end of each semester, so we've had two half-days this year, distinguished from early release, because they are a true half-day. And if we, if we say, hey, we can't do that half-day at the end of the year, we're gonna do a full day, that gets us about the same amount of minutes back into the calendar as these two early-release Wednesdays. So, looking at all those and having conversations in cabinet and with leaders at the district level, our recommendation for you this evening is to utilize the bad weather day, of course, and then utilize those last two early-release days of the year to bring us in compliance, into compliance, back into compliance with the required minutes as established by the state.
So, we're saying the bad weather day will not get us to the full minutes that we need.
No, ma'am.
That we are still gonna be 105 minutes short.
Correct.
And so, that's why we have a bullet point number two. The options are, we use the early-release Wednesdays, we could add a day to the calendar at the end of the school year, we could take the professional development day, or we could...
Or we could look at that half-day and make it a full day, at which I would, you know, I'm uncertain about the popularity of that
I don't think our teachers would like that, all our students.
Of that option as well.
Well, yeah, it's, it's a bad decision and a hard decision, or smelly, a smelly decision and a stinky decision. There we go. But we need to get our minutes, and so, board members, any other questions for that?
Trying to understand, so, for elementary, once we utilize April 18th, we will still be 105 minutes short. So, why is that two early releases? Wouldn't we be able to get that in one? Oh, that's nine.
Yeah, 90 minutes. So we tried to, we did try to craft the solution that gets us the closest without getting too crazy, like, hey, 90-plus, we're gonna add 15 minutes to one day, or, you know, the last two weeks of school are an extra one minute each, it just gets a little bit tricky. And we get, we have, you know, a couple extra minutes to spare with the adding in 180 minutes.
Thank you for explaining all the options that you guys went through, I appreciate that, that information. I just, I've heard from a lot of teachers that this reading academy thing is really, really tough, and these early-release days are helping them get that done in a timely fashion. So, I know this isn't an easy decision for any of us to make, and the thought of adding a day to the end of the school year is, yeah, not, not great.
Yeah, I mean, and I wouldn't, I would, well, I'm not even gonna say it, because I would, you know, hey, we can use that last day for reading academies. No, that's not really gonna fly. I, again, I've said it many times, but I do appreciate, and I know it was a difficult decision to, to continue with the early releases this year and build in those 26 early-release days, and, and it was for expressly for reading academies and additional planning and collaboration while we're still wrestling with some of the challenges that the last 22 months have brought to our, our teachers and our staff.
Matt, I know, it's, 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 we, it's pushed, it is a hard year for everybody. I, I understand that, and if we ended up, if we end up approving this and going with this, is there something as a board we can do to help support our teachers who are trying to get those final reading academy time training? I mean, is there something we need to do to help support or get them over their finish line? If, if we can't do, if we can't, right, if we're gonna do these early-release days, what else could we do? And if you don't have an answer yet, that's okay. You can just tell me to pause, and you can get something to us if you can think of something.
So the, the smart answer would be to pause, and I hardly ever do that. And so, what I would just say is that I, we, working with our area superintendents, can collaborate with our principals to see how we can maximize the time that is built into the calendar, to provide that support for our teachers to do it. It, it has been an incredibly heavy lift for our teachers on top of, on top of all the other challenges that our teachers have been dealing with. We, I appreciate the teachers, and I don't say that enough. I just wanna, I'm gonna look at the camera while I say that, and I'm gonna send something out later this evening or perhaps tomorrow, just reiterating, you know, our gratitude and just the respect that, that we have for, for everyone's, you know, the commitment through, through all of it. The, the communication I was crafting sounded so much better, so.
That's great. I'm wondering, those last two early-release Wednesdays, do we have just an estimate as far as our teachers who are taking reading academy? Will they be completed by then? Where are they going to be at? Because I, I know a letter went out to some of them about this, and I'm just concerned that we're setting them up and not giving enough time. And I'm kinda curious, like, is it, should they be done by that time for reading academy?
So I'm, I'm processing your question.
Sorry, I'm just, yeah, I'm just worried, I don't want to take any more away from our teachers. Like, that academy thing is good and bad, I've seen the good and I've seen the bad. My main concern is, again, once again, we're just piling on more and more and taking away, and I don't want to put those teachers in a position where, you know, they can't make it up because they don't have these early releases, and I know a letter was sent out to them about the requirements to finish this academy, and I'm just, I'm really, really worried.
So, if I can just jump in, let's just be clear that this is a state requirement. It, it does not have adequate funding associated with it. We have given a lot to them this year, 24 early releases, if we take these two away. They have to get done. There are severe consequences for them personally if they don't. So, we're gonna assist them and help them get through the process, but we're gonna have to make sure that we hold them accountable, too. So, unfortunately, there, there, there are some things that we're gonna have to push hard on to make sure that they get done. We'll do everything in our power to make that happen. We also can't, can't control the weather. We're in this position, we nearly got this today and tomorrow, in a worse position where we'd have to do more. We're not out of the woods yet, it's still possible we could get weather event that could cause us to have to come back and, and add more minutes back to the calendar. So, some of those things are out of our control. We'll do everything in our power to make sure that we help them through, but we're gonna have to get them through.
And I think, yeah, that's why I asked, like, I'm, again, I know it's required by TEA, it's an unfinanced mandate, yay, yay, yay. I just, I'm curious to know, like, by the time we get to there, and like you said, we've given these opportunities, what does that percentage look like? How many teachers have completed this academy? That's, that's where my head's trying to wrap around, like, is it gonna be like 10% teachers that need to complete it? My main concern is just, I know we've given them a lot of time, I understand their early releases has been very beneficial, I just don't want to get in a situation where backs up against the wall because of, you know, this isn't our control. That, that's all I'm looking for, because I feel like this year's been so incredibly hard for our teachers. Anything we can do to make it easy, I'm gonna be all for, and that's what I'm looking at.
Absolutely, and, and we understand, and they've worked incredibly hard, and, and it is difficult, it's, it's a lot that they've been asked to do and that they have to meet. So, we're gonna continue to work with them, we'll get you that data as soon as we can.
I'm curious, is there a possibility or an option where, if we made this choice to convert those two early releases, that we would be able to allow teachers who need that time for, for their academy and other grades? I mean, is that just crazy talk, Gloria? I mean, I'm trying to think of, if they've already accounted for them, that, that they're counting on this time as part of their process for completion, and, and we remove that time, is there, is there any possibility of finding a way where we bring admin, we do some type of sharing, classroom sharing for half-day, so that those teachers that are required to complete their reading academy could still have that time? And you can say, Gloria, that's just crazy talk, that's...
I'm gonna jump in again, but we, I think we appreciate the sentiment, and we understand that the board is very supportive of our teachers, and we are gonna do everything in our power to make that happen, and gonna ask that you allow us to do that work and to make that happen, and we'll certainly come back and, and let you know how, how we've done as we've got through.
I just have one comment. I will preface it by saying, I know it's gonna be an unpopular comment, but we don't have control over the weather, that's true. Last-minute changes to our academic calendar, nobody likes that. What we can control is the academic calendar we adopt when we adopt it, and ensuring that that academic calendar has enough buffer minutes in it so that we don't run into these problems too often. That's where we have an opportunity to fix this for future instances. I've been in Texas long enough to know that some calendars, you don't have any problems at all, we've got more minutes than we need. Other calendars, other years, we run into problems like this. This year's a little different in that because of COVID, because of reading academies and all that, we adopted a tight calendar. We did not have much buffer, and so, we're paying for it now. And I just want to call out the fact that the way to resolve this is to make sure that when we adopt the calendar, we had a large enough buffer there so that we don't have to go back and make last-minute changes like this.
So my comment is on, on May 26th, like, if you convert that to full day, a lot of people have made plans already, could have, and so, that will just be a lot of absences. Same thing with the next day, adding the next day. I share a lot of the sentiments that have already been expressed around converting those early-release days. Is there any way to add more minutes to each day, to the end of, between now and the end of the year? I don't know if it's possible.
I think that's a much bigger lift than you, I think a lot of people in this room probably had a hard attack with asking for minutes in the day. We have had that conversation and circled the drain a few times on that front, and so I don't think that's fair, our realistic expectation of teachers to change mid-year. I will say, yes, we're in a very uncomfortable situation, and we want to honor teachers' time. The best part about this solution is we honor a lot of full days. So we're honoring March 21st, we're honoring other full days, and so we're not overcompensating in minutes, and I think we need to keep that in line of this conversation. We're squeaking by, and so, like, like Matt said, we're looking into the cameras and we're saying, teachers, we appreciate you, we know you've worked hard this year, we know you've given above and beyond. We will expect administration to support you in finishing your reading academies, but this is just where we landed today, unfortunately. And so with that, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the recommended revisions to the 2021-2022 year academic calendar as presented.
Second.
I have a motion from Alexis, a second from Erin. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, five. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Two nays, motion carries. And Matt, we'll be looking for an update on all the great next things we're gonna do to get our staff and do that teacher reading academy, so, thank you. All right, we'll move on to our next agenda item. Consider approval of resolution providing a limited waiver to Board Policy FDA local for specific students.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees. I'm coming to you tonight to ask for approval of a resolution to amend F, Policy FDA local for a very limited number of students. As you are aware, we recently discovered that 29 students who reside in an area of our district that's a high, fast-growth area actually reside in a neighboring school district and not Leander. So we're asking that you approve a resolution that would allow for a waiver of this policy for these 29 students, so that we could minimize disruption to their education. The policy would allow these students to remain in Leander ISD through the end of the 21-22 school year. And then there are seven students who are in grades four, seven, and 11, and we're asking that the waiver would also be, allow these students to remain at their school, whether it's their current elementary, middle, or high school, through the end of the 22-23 school year.
Lauren, this is not about other discussions, though, there are other layered discussions that are taking place, and those will come back to the board at the appropriate time.
Yes, ma'am, this is just seeking approval of the resolution.
I move the board adopt the resolution providing a limited waiver to Policy FDA local for specific students as presented.
Second.
I have a motion from Gloria, a second from Erin. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. All right, we'll go ahead and take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and do operations quickly, hopefully. Thank you.
I gotta blow my nose.
I gotta blow my nose.
Board members, it is 8:28, and we are back in open session. Here they come. All right. All right, board members, we are moving on to the next agenda item, which is consider approval of resolution authorizing the TCAD chief appraiser to act as an agent.
Good evening, board members. This is an administrative process. We did receive our state values on January 31st. And once again, several Travis County schools were assigned invalid findings based on the comptroller study, and so we were in our second year of grace. The chief appraiser for Travis Central Appraisal District would like to protest the findings. And because of a chain, administrative rule change, it requires the governing body of the school district to designate the chief appraiser as agent in order to act on behalf of the district. There is no harm to the district in filing this protest. Should the protest succeed and we don't get assigned state values, then we would not, or we don't fill the study, then we would not be in that year of grace. There's a very slight chance that this protest would be successful, so it would be our second year of grace, which makes the 22 tax-year study even more imperative. You did receive a Friday memo on that. So this evening, we're looking for approval of the resolution so the chief appraiser can move forward with protesting the 21 tax-year values.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the resolution authorizing the Travis Central Appraisal District's chief appraiser to act as an agent for the district in protesting the comptroller's 2021 values.
I second.
Motion from Alexis, second from Anna. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carries. We'll move on to the next item, discussion of the 2022, 2023 budget development update.
All right, I have with me this evening Gina Mitski. If you'll recall, she covered for me in January so that I could play grandmother, so I appreciate that. She's here again with me tonight because next year, she's going to do all the budget presentations. Maybe not. No, she is the Director of Budget and Compliance, and so she is the machine behind all these numbers and is here to hold my hand tonight. So I want to give you an update on where we are. We are very early in the budget process, but it is about to be March, and we are in the thick of it. So looking at the budget calendar in relation to where we are, campus budget requests are due March 11. Those won't impact the numbers that we're showing you because we know what the campus allocations are. And so those won't change our projections. What will change our projections potentially are the department budgets, which are also due March 11. And the reason they could impact our projections are they're based on the needs and/or wants for the department. So I'm going to use IT as an example. A lot of our services from the IT department are based on users. And as the district adds more users, those costs could increase. In plant services, we could have increases in fuel and utilities just because of inflation. And so until we get the budget request in and know what is being asked for for next year, we have an estimate for those costs. New position requests were due on February 16. And these are positions that are requested outside of the staffing formulas. So if I wanted to add a position to my department, that request was due on February 16. And so we are working through that data. But one thing that you do have on your agenda this evening is the release of early, or early release of new positions. Now, these are new teaching positions and positions that are crucial for the opening of North Elementary and the Early College High School. And so you do have this information on another agenda item, but as you can see here, a recap of the total 80 positions. 60 of those being at the elementary to comply with the 22 to 1 staffing ratios. We are seeing a reduction in overall middle school teachers. Again, these are based on projected enrollment numbers, and so fewer students dictate fewer teachers. A slight increase in high school, and then an increase in dual language. And again, the positions for North Elementary and Early College High School.
Elaine? We have an item coming up on this later, so let me make sure I understand. When we vote on early release, we're then kind of locking ourselves in, in a way, to go that direction. And as much as I think our student class size ratios are important, I know we're having conversations with our principals. And what do principals go though? When I look at it, though, if we had one student in the classroom, we could do X, Y, Z, or have so many teachers. Or I am concerned about the trade-offs. So as we move through this discussion, I just want you to know, that'll be in the back of my mind is, is it possible to table that vote until we have more information? I know we don't, we don't need to discuss it now until we get to that item, but I just wanted you to know that we're having those discussions because I love class size ratios. I think trying to keep those low are important. But when you have some of the things that we're trying to deal with, there are other factors at play that we also need to, I think, and our board wants to balance those as well.
Exactly, and it is part of the bigger picture. I don't believe we did early release last year because we were very concerned about how many kids were actually going to show up for this school year. And remember, the demographer projected 8.6% growth. We're just over 3 at this point, and so we did not release early last year. One of the big drivers this year is the number of teachers in the field and our supply of teachers to be able to get hired and to give the principals the opportunity to start that process sooner rather than later. But we can definitely discuss that further.
Elaine, related to this request, I'd like to understand currently open and unfilled positions and how they relate to the early release requests. In other words, are there some of those that we could potentially fill that would apply to these particular positions but that we've already approved, already authorized, and we just haven't hired yet? Does that make sense?
Sort of. I mean, if a campus is slated for 20 teachers and five of those are vacant, and next year they need 22, they're still going to need those five that are vacant and the 22 if we were fully staffed.
Understand. For me, though, it's a question of timing. The whole objective of early release is to hire them now. And my point is, we're not using them now, and we're not likely to use them a lot between now and the end of this school year. So we could use what we've already budgeted and what we already have in our hiring plan to satisfy these now for next year. And then if we need more, we could add those at a future date. Just trying to anticipate the timing and recognizing, you know, some of the potential challenges of this budget cycle and trying not to overcommit to the early releases sooner than we have to.
And, you know, any that we hire now for these positions, they would not start till next school year unless they went into a vacant position now. So that doesn't really reduce the total number.
Is this, Erin, a good one for us to have when we have that agenda item? Or does it impact this one too? Just out.
I'm not sure I understand.
The discussion that we're asking, would it be better to wait until we get to that agenda item, though, on the early release? Does it, does it, does it cause you consternation to have that discussion then, or do you want to?
It doesn't bother me when we talk about it. I just am not sure that we're understanding each other in this exchange here. And so I'm happy to put a pin in it and try again later.
Okay, the other thing that has occurred since we've last talked budget was we did receive the state property values on January 31st. And so you'll see in a slide or two that did impact our revenue projection slightly. We are looking for local certified estimated property values at the end of April. So that is still an estimate that we're using in the numbers. So it's really hard to read on the screen, and so hopefully you can read it at your spot. The first column represents what the numbers were in December. And then the second column is where we are in February, and there's really just been a couple of changes. So first of all, in revenues, as I mentioned, because of the state property values that we received for 2021, we use that to estimate for 2022. It came in a little bit lower, and so our revenues went up slightly. So that's the only change we've made in revenues. In expenditures, we haven't really made any changes, again, waiting on budget requests, which are due March 11. Major maintenance, we initially had $6 million in there for funding major maintenance as a transfer out. We're lowering that to $5 million based on the major maintenance funding plan that we talked about in January. And so that brings the total deficit from the $37 million in December to $35.7 million now. I'll remind you that the budget parameter that was approved was 4%, which would provide for the allowance of a $15 million deficit. And so that leaves us today with $20,600,000 to address in order to adopt a budget in June that meets the parameter. So how do we go about addressing that $20 million? Well, there's a couple of ways. We've looked at enhancing revenues through the tier-two pennies. We could look at reducing all of that through expenditures. That's going to be very, very painful. Or it would be a combination of the two, and that's what we will ultimately be recommending. So if we look at enhancing revenues, just to remind you of the conversation we had on January 13 when we did a deep dive into school finance, of the golden pennies, we are currently accessing five of those. You're allowed eight. So we have three available. Each of those pennies generates just under $5 million, but they do require voter approval. We could access those three without an increase in the total tax rate by lowering the INS to offset that increase on the LMO. And I mean, reminds you, those golden pennies are not subject to recapture and based on the formulas could generate state aid. Then we move into the copper pennies, and as we showed you in January, those net just a little over $2 million. We do have access to nine under the law. Those two require voter approval. And I just want to update this slide. More than four likely increases the total tax rate. And then there's other ways to enhance revenues that we haven't really talked about. These are things that we would need to explore, discuss, fully vet. So these next two slots, I just kind of threw something at the wall. I'm not saying that this is what we should do, but many districts charge participation fees, fees to ride the bus, advertising on school buses. There's some other ways to generate revenue. They're not huge. They're not subject to recapture, but that would really take more studying. I don't have numbers for you on that, but there are ways to look for other revenues.
Elaine, this is about increasing revenues to be able to fund what we were talking about. So without an increase in revenue or combination or decrease, we couldn't fund the 2% raises. Right. So when I look at this, my first thought is, okay, well, then maybe we can give our staff like the 4% or the 7% raise, or I don't, whatever, right? But we're saying, when we look at these options, it's, we're looking at them because we want to maintain a 2% tax rate, a 2%
2% raise.
Which, as our staff will all probably, and we all know this, this is why we're saying we need to do something additional. And we're going to have to look at legislation and state to help. But, okay, so this isn't talking about an extra surplus. It's to meet the needs that we've already identified.
Right. It's to address the programs we already have in place and maintain and grow our staff and give them cost of living increases. So we showed you this in January.
Elaine, sorry, can we go back real quick? I asked previously about teacher incentive allotment and other similar sort of opportunities to find additional revenue. Are those, is teacher incentive allotment a viable option? Would that help us to potentially add revenue? I know it may not be a massive source of revenue, but... I know it may not be a, a massive source of revenue, but there might be some benefit there or other similar programs?
So my understanding of the teacher incentive allotment is it's pass through, so it's not necessarily revenue, but it is a way to reward teachers more. I know we had conversations about it before COVID, and that may be something we're still discussing. I don't have details on that for you this evening.
Yeah, particularly in an environment where we're concerned about balancing the budget to provide the 2% raise, if that's a vehicle to help us increase pay for teachers, that to me seems like a worthy endeavor, worthy exploration.
I think we must just recognize that it doesn't, it doesn't pay all teachers, it only pays some, and it's tied to pretty stringent mechanisms. And so we just have to be careful, I think, and make sure we understand that carefully.
I don't claim to have a, a complete knowledge of this allotment or many other, many others that we might consider. I'm asking to put them all on the table and try and figure out which ones make sense. And I recognize that they may not be equally applicable to all of our employees, but to me, that, I mean, that just says that they're not perfect, but it could still help provide additional pay to some of our employees, which seems to me to be a, a good thing if it's, if it's available.
I, I agree. I think it's a good thing that should be happen in addition. I'm not sure that it can replace the 2%, especially because it's only for teachers, and so it wouldn't fund, 2% raise funds in increase, a cost of living increase for all employees.
To Erin's point, I, I concur that I think looking at other incentives or grants for teachers is tremendous, but to your point, Dr. Garing, when y'all bring those, I think that is important to talk about what are the extra requirements or stipulations that'll be put on our teachers? We already got ourselves in a reading academy, HB 4545, and so sometimes something might look flashy at first, and you start looking at what it does to a system, and it might not do what we, we really want for help. So, yeah, thank you for bringing all that information to us. I guess that'll be Elaine, though, HR, Carrie Lynn for HR, not Elaine's group, right?
Yes, I'm going to throw that one to her. All right, I just want to remind you of this chart. You'll be seeing versions of this quite frequently, and what this shows is our current 2021 tax rate. You'll notice on the MCR, we automatically compress because of the value growth in the district. Then we have three scenarios here just to show what ifs. So use adding three pennies, five pennies, or seven pennies. This is where I say we can easily do three pennies without a change or an increase in the total tax rate. So you can see today we're at $133.7. Moving the three pennies from INS to MNO honors the compression on the tax rate and results in a total tax rate of $131.96, which is nearly 2 cents lower than where we are today and generates 14.7 million for the district. And then as you move across, you can just see what the different pennies do. The last column with the seven pennies, that is taking the absorbed, the compression, and then moving it to a copper, and so that keeps the tax rate level as to where it is today. None of these are a recommendation tonight, just want to remind you of this, and we're going to be bringing you more information on a VATRE in March. But I do want to show you, we have not looked at this, so what does a VATRE do for the finances long term? So right now, we're focused on the 22, 23 budget year because that's what we're working on, but we, you know, continually bring you three-year projections, and so what does that look like? So the first half of this page just shows you the three-year projections of where we are now if we adopted the $35 million deficit for 22, 23, and how that grows, and why is that growing? So if you just do some quick math, you will see from year to year, revenues are growing at right of $9 million a year. So remember, our revenues are based on our students and the makeup of our students and that basic allotment, and that's what filled that tier one bucket. And then it's a matter of how much are you going to fill that bucket with tax collections and how much are you going to fill it with state aid? And then we looked at the scenario when we filled it all with local tax dollars and we swept the excess over to the state bucket. That's why we're looking at ways to generate additional revenues because our revenues are flat. Expenditures, on the other hand, when you add new schools, when you add teachers, when you add raises, expenditures are growing exponentially. And so we've got expenditures growing just under 17 million from 22, 23 to 23, 24, and then nearly 18 million the following year. And so we've got to start cutting back on our expenditures and increasing our revenues. But the point of this slide is to show you with three pennies, for the first budget year we're talking about, that reduces the deficit down to just 21 million compared to our 4% parameter of 15 million, we would still need to be cutting about 6 million. And then as you go across, you can see three pennies doesn't solve our problem in the long term, and so that's why we've got to start looking for reductions. Doing the same thing with four pennies and five pennies, same story. So you'll notice that between four pennies and five pennies, that's that $2 million increase, so revenues are going up about 2 million each year, but expenditures are still growing at that 17 million level. And so the deficit is not as much, but the point of these two slides is to say revenues alone will not solve this problem. So if that's not going to fix it, what do we do about expenditures? So I'll remind you that 85% of our budget is allocated to payroll. That means 15% is not payroll, and that equates to about 53 million. If I tried to cut 21 million out of non-payroll costs, that would be a 40% reduction. That's just not realistic. A big chunk of that is utilities and transportation, and so there are services in that non-payroll budget that you just can't reduce. And we have trimmed and trimmed, and we've asked departments to cut and cut in the last two years, and we are currently in an inflationary environment that is going to probably add costs rather than reduce those. So then when we start looking at payroll, again, why is it growing? Well, if we maintain those staffing ratios and we have student growth, then that automatically leads to more teachers. So we have a growth in students to be served, we have the implementation of new programs, and that cost of living increase. And obviously, 2% isn't even close to the cost of living increases that we're seeing, but it's something rather than nothing. And so then I get asked a lot, well, just trim administration. And I'll remind you from the 2021 Tapper Report, the allocation of our staffing across the district, that's just not realistic at the administrative level. So at central administration, you have 40%, 0.40%, so less than 1% of your total employees in that category. When you move to campus administration, just over 2%. And so this is why we're going to be looking at the district as a whole and trying to figure out where we start to reduce these expenditures. So what we will be moving towards is a combination of the two strategy, strategies. As you've just seen, the three-year projections reflect the need for additional revenues and expenditure reductions. Simply increasing revenues reduces the impact, but it doesn't fully solve the problem. And so we're looking at a phased in approach. So we're not cutting the tail off right now, but we're going to start nibbling at that tail of the dog so that the cuts aren't as painful as they would be if we keep waiting. If you wait till year three, it's just going to be way too late. And so to give you some context, without the VADER, we're looking at cuts equal to about 330 FTEs, and then you can see how that number declines. With 5 cents, you're looking at a million in cuts, but we would still recommend that you do more, again, so that your cuts in the future years are not so painful. And so we're going to take a measured and systematic approach to this deficit.
Just a language clarification. When we talk about cuts here, we mean cuts to the staffing formula or the proposed future staffing levels, not the current staffing levels, correct?
It could be staffing levels, it could be programs, it could be...
Yeah, sorry, what, you use FTEs here, right? So I'm just trying to apply the FTE language to the future year staff targets. Is that correct? The budget year?
That would be for the 22, 23 without or with the VATRE to get to the budget that we need to adopt for this year.
Let me take a stab at it. I think I understand. So we've already set the staffing levels for next year that has, that's what produced the $35 million deficit. And so to answer your question, I think, yes, we're reducing, reducing expenditures off of future staffing levels, not current ones.
Right.
Does that help?
Yes, and I'm, I'm doing this, I think, for our community and for our staff who watch or listen to these meetings after the fact. When we say cuts here, unless we're talking about 330, we're not really talking about reduction of current staff. We're talking about hiring fewer new staff for next budget year. So when we say cuts, we're not talking about cuts of current employees unless the number is larger than the number that we would add in aggregate. I understand there may be nominal exceptions in departments or classrooms or whatever, but in aggregate, unless the number to be cut exceeds the net new number that we would add from this budget year to next budget year, we wouldn't actually let employees go.
We would be looking to make these reductions through attrition. So a position is vacated, someone moves into another.
Yes, and, and in the example here with 4 cents, where we talk about cutting 54 FTE, 54 is far fewer than the number of new employees we would hire for next year from the current year's budget. So we wouldn't actually cut, that is, we wouldn't let go any employees. And if we didn't have any natural attrition, we probably could still achieve that number. We'd still be hiring people, but we wouldn't hire as many.
Well, so unfortunately, it's a little more complicated than just the numbers work that way, but the employees, who the employees are, the positions that are there don't necessarily work that way.
I understand.
So you may end up having to cut positions that exist right now, even though you're adding other positions to meet student growth in the classroom, if that makes sense.
I understand. Those are choices about this department over that department, or this function over that function, or, or something like that. I'm just trying to look at it at the aggregate level and make sure that our community and our staff don't read this as any of these scenarios mean we're going to be giving people pink slips and they're going to leave their employment. That's not necessarily the expected outcome.
Correct.
But help me, because when we have discussions with principals, is it to help us make the budget tell us the positions that aren't going to be open, or how does the, it, it's a, it's a cut when principals are talking about it, right?
Part of the problem is with the release of new positions, right? And that's why we're having that conversation. I think it ties very closely to this conversation because if we release those new positions, then that forces us to reduce other positions in the district, to your point. If we don't release those positions, it gives us a little more flexibility the longer we go. And so I, I think we need to address some more. I wrote some things down as I was thinking through what you were asking earlier, so when we come to that, we can talk about it, but...
And also, I mean, this is all based on voter approval. And secondly, I think this ties into a lot of critical discussions we're having in the long-range facilities planning, and so, you know, how we can maximize facilities and maximize growth or declining enrollments. And so I think that is a hand-in-hand conversation that we need to, it's good to have these numbers and know what that looks like, and then how we can aid based on maximizing facilities, neighborhood schools, and those type of conversations.
Alexis, that makes me think of this, this is almost, in a way, our demographic where we did the exercise. We said, how do we make all the facilities? How would we use them all? We're saying, okay, we have another exercise of how are we going with the revenues the way they are? How will we do it? And, and so we're at that part of the conversation.
Right, because I think we have some challenges with those under-enrolled campuses. How do we really strategically place students and use a campus fully and strategically to mitigate some of this? And, and then it's a two-piece, right? We can do a 2% raise if we get a voter-approved, three-set carryover, if we start there, right? But then the, back into that conversation is, we're also giving you an almost 2 cent property tax rate rollback. And so we're also trying not to staff, price people, price staff out of the area. And so it's kind of this interesting influx and nuanced thing, but, you know, that tax rate rollback also helps keep staff in their homes.
And I reminded that there's also a home state exemption on the May election, that if that gets approved, we'll roll that increase in home state exemption that will help taxpayers do.
Right, I'm super excited about that. And so increasing home state exemption by 15,000 to 40,000, and that is a huge benefit also, right? To try to keep staff not priced out, or myself priced out of my home. So it's exciting.
Okay, so next step. So now through March, visiting with campuses about possible reductions. We started that yesterday, and we have meetings planned in March to continue, excuse me, those discussions. So then you see the next step there, review new position requests. That will be ongoing. Then March 24th, we would be bringing to the board a proposed amendment to the assumptions to let us know if there's an appetite to pursue the VATRE because that's really going to determine how drastic we need to get with expenditure reductions based on the comfort of the board and the VATRE yes or no, and then the level of that. So we'll be talking extensively about that in March. In April, again, we would present some recommended budget reductions, and HR would present the compensation plan recommendations. Then May, we would have a proposed budget for you to review and approve the compensation plan, and then ultimately approval of an adoption of the budget on June 23rd. And now you can have your discussion.
All right, so some of the things that came to mind as you were going through this presentation was taking, and as your, as part of your campus visits, that it could be an opportunity to take a look at existing programs and see if there's some that are somewhat at the end of their life cycle, or may, because there's a sort of duplicate newer model somewhere else that can be consolidated, and there might be a few of those. And it kind of plays into Alexis's point about using, better use of some facilities that have space. And then, so that would be on the classroom side, and then just in general, any opportunities for efficient, to increase efficiency in operations. And some other issue that's been, I've been, I guess it might, this today might not be a good day, but it might come up again next month, is that just the questions I've asked about ESS and how it affects increase in substitute pay? Or not?
All of those things are under consideration.
So I'm glad we have this information so we can really have those deeper conversations in our committee work for the long-range facilities planning. I think it goes back to a few things that I have, like a broken record on. And so I'm excited about what that opens up possibilities for programs to be strategically placed. Once again, if you're Apple, Dell, or Google, and you'd like to partner with us and have your name on the side of a building, we will gladly accept your donation and have the next college campus of your choice, which I know Bruce is going to kick me later. But thinking big, right? And bringing those exciting programs in campus, schools of choice, and partnering with those companies or businesses in our area, we would love to partner with you. And we're having those discussions now, so reach out.
I'm curious, the long-range committee are looking at facilities, and there you're looking at programs. Don't want to do too much of a scope creep because I'm hoping we can get the information out and we can get it out to the community, and then they, after y'all set the parameters, the community can have discussions. But what about for when we're talking about personnel and FTEs and all that? Is that something the long-range? Range Committee has started talking about, Dr. Gering, or have you? Is that an area for those discussions?
Madam President, we are just beginning those conversations. We're right now looking at our purpose statement, and then going through some operational definitions that will help us then further define some subcommittees where we might could continue those conversations. But we're not at that point just yet.
I jumped like 20 steps ahead, sorry.
That's all right. But I will tell you that everything is being considered as we have the long-range planning conversations, as well as the budget, everything is, is being discussed together.
That, that, oh, sorry. Quick comment related to that working group. Everything is being considered, sort of. We have a narrower mandate, which is really very facilities-specific. And so, when you ask about programs, in my mind, we're looking at current programs. We're not really thinking about possible future programs. We're looking at current programs and sort of the, the shape of their facility usage. So, that's kind of the extent. I think, given our timeframe and the work that we need to return to the board and to our community, I think we should be careful not to go beyond that at this point. There are other parallel conversations that can happen alongside that, but I don't think asking that group to go there is, is going to be wise in terms of helping us to bring the necessary material back quickly.
Erin, just to clarify, when you say go there, can you, I want to make sure I'm on the same page.
Yeah. Go there meaning new programs, schools of choice, and all of the things that they may entail. I think that's, that's, that's too much for this particular assignment for that working group. I think we're looking at current facilities, current programs, usage profiles, and how to adjust the current consumption of facilities in a way that produces more efficient results without creating stress and other difficulties for our community, right?
I, I think that's, that sounds like a good, fair plan, given the time. One of the questions I had was, you said that yesterday y'all spoke with principals. Really want to hear a little bit more about that, because I think as we look at those cuts and how we can cut, I really think, I want to hear a lot from them about how, what that looks like on, because they know, they know their, their, their programs, they know their communities. I know that all cuts are bad cuts, but I think that they may, I'd love to hear how that, what that discussion and what that interaction is going to look like, because I really think that our principals and their staff could really bring us back some, that's where a lot of that creative ideas could come, that I'd love to hear from.
Yeah. We had a, we had a, a good meeting yesterday. It's a hard meeting always, but a good meeting. Our approach with them was to make sure that they had a clear understanding of the position that we're in, so our current reality. So, Elaine did a great job of laying out this current reality for them. We had some process in time with them to allow them to process together a little bit about what that looks like. They talked some about their experiences the last time we had to do this, which was relatively painful, and how that developed some competition between levels and became relatively difficult to do. So, we talked through how we might proceed going forward. We, we have given them some ideas in terms of lists. What we've asked them to do is really, you know, a couple of weeks, meetings ago, we talked about the Michigan leadership model with the competing values. And so, we introduced that back to them again, that we have competing values here. So, we spent the last significant amount of time producing a strategic plan based on work that you've done on core beliefs and vision and mission and all this great work. But that aspiration necessarily competes with, with the resource deployment. And so, how are we going to balance these two things together? And what we asked them to do is really start to think about, what are the most important things that you do that we need to hang on to? What are the things that we really need to be doing as we're going forward? Really focusing on what's important, in contrast to what's urgent, which is not sometimes the same thing. And how do we hang on to those things and make sure that we do the right things aligned with the strategic plan as we go forward, as opposed to starting with what do we cut? I think if we start from that negative deficit lens, it becomes a little more difficult and challenging to do that work. But we have given them a list of items that they can start to look at and start to think about. There's space on the bottom for them to add their items. And then, we've converted our March 8th instructional meeting, leadership meeting, into a budget meeting, again, to bring them back, to really hear those ideas from, from our campus leadership. Because you're right, they're the ones who are closest to what's happening there. We did also point out to them that we are going to lead from the central office. And so, we're looking very closely right now at, at what we do at the central office and how we do that, and trying to make decisions about how do we lead from central office in this work of identifying what's most important, and what do we hang on to, and what can we let go of.
If I can go back to Slide 10, I just wanted to ask one question about, this is the expenditure reductions. In that last grouping, the growth in students driving payroll costs, I wanted to dig into that just a little bit. And, and let me kind of give you a framework for my question. I'm trying to understand how that's a, I understand how it's a driver of overall expenses. I don't understand necessarily how that's a driver of deficits. Let me explain. If we have 41,000 students, and we have a balanced budget with all the staffing necessary to serve 41,000 students, there's a set of ratios that make that balance and make that work. And if we add another 1,000 students, we should add proportionally to the staff, and we should still have a balanced budget. If we have a deficit budget, let's say we're $30 million in deficit for the staff to serve those 41,000 students, I can see how adding students creates bigger deficits, because we're out of balance. And so, adding more students to that equation forces more staff, which forces more deficit, more expense, and all of that, right? So, I'm just trying to understand, when we talk about growth in students, that should be neutral in a balanced budget environment, or approximately balanced budget environment, right, within our 4% parameter and all of that. Is there something I'm not understanding there that makes student growth a bigger devil in the budget process?
Well, some examples I can think of. So, we grew 1,000 in pre-K. We're only getting half-funding for them. We've added a ton of teachers, and their staff ratios are lower. So, they get an aide and a teacher in the pre-K level. So, that's a huge driver of the cost.
But if I may, I would say that's not purely growth. That's a particular type of growth, and it's a choice we made to offer full-day pre-K when we only had half-day funding. So, we kind of accepted the fact that we were going to be in deficit in that particular area of the budget for a time. And so, sorry?
It's an unfunded mandate, because we are required to do full-day pre-K.
Fine. The, the point is the same, though, right? I mean, we chose to operate that way, and having more students of that type certainly creates a challenge, but we have to strike a new balance. Agreed? And then, adding students again should come roughly proportionally with that balanced budget environment.
If it was the right students. So, I might get two more second graders, and I have to add a teacher.
Understand that in narrow cases, but we'll also be in situations where we'll save a teacher. Those typically go both directions, right?
They don't. Isn't it in here?
So, when you say growth in that case, though, you're not talking about just growth. You're talking about growth that exceeds our projection. So, we're having to add teachers later, because we had more students in classes than we projected.
No. All these numbers are based on the demographers' projected students. So, you can see I'm adding 60 additional elementary teachers based on what the student number is supposed to be in elementary.
Understood. I guess where I'm going here is, if we have a balanced equation, right, where number of staff and number of students, or cost of staff and number of students balance, when we add students, we add the commensurate staff, and we balance again.
But we get $8,000 a student, and it costs $62,000 for a teacher.
Yeah, but by that logic, we lose money every day on all of our existing students.
Pretty much.
Okay. I think we're talking past each other.
How much are we adding in?
It's true. What he's saying is true, but you can't add any increases. No dual-language program. No, you're, it's all the additional, probably special programs and special education, and those are in the classroom, too.
If you're adding disproportionately to more expensive programs, that makes sense. But that's not merely growth, right?
No. If we were just, if you're talking about just mere growth, and it was just regular K through fifth, then what we're increasing in revenue and students is probably about the same. But it's everything else to enhance the programs and the things that we're required to do, even in dual-language or bilingual, that we have to do. We're still required to do those things. And so, that's the additional adds that are there, and the increases. I mean, a $6 million, 2% increase, so that's all payroll. Opening a campus, the base to open that campus is 1.5 million.
Which is due to those students.
So, fundamentally...
So, the point of that slide is just to say, why is payroll growing?
Here, here's where I'm going fundamentally, right? If we can balance the operation for 41,000 students, but we have to go into deficit to run the operation for 42,000 students, we have a problem. That means that our district suddenly got too big, and we should go back to 41,000 students or something, right?
No. But, but, but I think the, the fundamental assumption is what's incorrect. So, we're not balanced at 41,000 students is the problem.
Right. Which is why adding students causes bigger deficits.
Correct. But, but here's the other piece of that, is that in, in Leander, we're not just offering an X education. We're offering an X plus 17 education, because the expectations of our system have been much higher than in other places for a very long time, forever, apparently. And so, it's all of those additional things. And we spent a long time talking about, I think what Gina said is right. But it's not even just those required programs whose kids get an extra weight. It's a, it's a lot of other things, too. I was talking to Monica de Agasa in, in here, one of our new principals who came to us from Austin ISD, and I asked her, so what, what is one of your biggest surprises as you came into the system? And she said, the staffing, right? So, I get what I need to accomplish, what I need to accomplish on my campus here. I never, I had to beg and fight and, and, and scratch for it in, in my previous district. And here, I get what I need, because that's what we've done, right? So, that's that extra 17. And we were trying to identify together, what is that 17? What are we offering that's really providing the interventions and the things that get our students to this excellent level of education? But it does cost a lot more money.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. I, I think that all makes sense. And this goes to some of the conversations we've had over the last couple of years, where I've talked about structural deficits, right? If offering that education that way isn't sustainable, we got to figure out how to get the system in balance, right? We can't indefinitely tap our fund balance to solve that problem. And so, we got to figure out how to get it in balance.
I, I agree with you 100%. And that's what we're bringing to the table. So, in summary, what we're bringing to the table is a combination of fixes for exactly that problem. And the combination of fixes is, we, we have, for this year, a $20 million deficit above what we can afford to do. And we can fix that in a combination of increasing revenue through available mechanisms, and we are able to do that and still decrease the tax rate. But, but that alone doesn't fix the problem. We still have to reduce our expenditures. And so, we have to identify, what are some of these extra things that we are going to have to do without? They're not easy to get rid of. We're not saying we want to get rid of them, but we do have to do that. We want to do that in measured amount. We'll do that in $6 million this year if we decide to, to add three pennies, or if the community allows us to do that. But we still going to have to come back next year and cut another $6 million, and the year after that, if we're going to solve the problem that you're talking about.
That all makes sense, and we're completely aligned on that. I think where I'm going is, for my part, growth isn't the problem. If Leander ISD continues to grow, we should be able to continue to have balanced budgets, or approximately balanced budgets, right? Growth doesn't drive the deficit. It's the structural problems underlying our budget that create the deficits.
No, I, I don't agree. I think it's part of the problem. But I think part of the problem is, the growth used to help fund the revenue, right? Because the growth was not only students, it was also appraisal value, because there were more houses, more commercial, more tax base. That's no longer true under House Bill 3. And so, the problem is, is school finances shifted fundamentally, and our old belief system is, is no longer true.
It has changed, but growth still funds the operations.
Not at the same level.
Not the same way. The growth in attendance funds the growth in staff.
Okay. So, you mentioned the word attendance, not enrollment. You said attendance.
Yeah, I understand.
Yes. So, yeah.
Yeah. And I understand the legislative priority that talks about enrollment versus attendance. I get all of that. But my point is, the system recognizes that growth in students needs more money, and the budget provides that. I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm simply saying, growth, the fact that we're a growing district, isn't what creates this budget deficit.
Okay.
All right. I think what I wanted to add was something, just one word that I picked off of that, which is the, I had, is this based on a 96 or 95% attendance?
Next year's budget is 95.
95. What have been our...
We're using 95 for the next three years.
Our good attendance years, what, what is that?
96.
96. So, really, that extra 1%, which is 3 million, is the best we can really squeeze out of attendance.
Unless we miraculously get people, kids to come to school more than they have in the past.
I was just trying to see if there's a way to, to get that attendance up.
And I think some creative ways of increasing revenues, like Alexis mentioned, right? Wrap those school buses and find different partnerships with, you know, with some of these companies that are moving into the area. I mean, it's only going to help at a certain level, but I do think we can, we can wordsmith and talk past each other as much as we want on Slide 10. I do feel like a lot of unfunded mandates, when I look at Slide 10, and I look growth of students to be served, I do think that a lot of unfunded mandates make that growth difficult. So, I think we can all look at that and, and see something, something different. I hear your point, but I, I disagree with that, because I do feel like unfunded mandates are in there. Also, with that cost of student, there's a lot of other programs with special education, with ESL, and different things that, you know, that we have, we, at Leander ISD, do well. And I think we want to continue doing those things to the level that, that we're doing them. And so, it does require us to, and our state does not fund that at that level. And I don't think that those are negotiables, right, for special education in ESL. And so, we are going to have to make hard cuts, because it's not just unfunded mandates, it's unfunded requirements that our students deserve.
And if we are staffing for enrollment, so for the 41,000 people, but we're being paid for the 39,000 that show up, that extra 2,000 kids, we're not getting money for, but the teachers are there for them.
I, I think we're being too literal in terms of the funding formula. It's just a different way to fund schools. And same with the unfunded mandates. It's not like that just happened in the last year. There've been unfunded mandates in education for decades. It's, I mean, it's been going on forever, right? And yeah, they accumulate and whatever. My point is, every district in the state of Texas has to bring their budget into balance, and they have to deal with all the same unfunded mandates. And there's no reason why we can't bring our budget into balance on an ongoing basis. That's exactly what we need to do.
I don't think anyone is saying that. What we're looking at, and what we keep talking about, is this one line on Slide 10, and whether we feel like that's an issue or not. And whether we feel like that's an issue or not an issue. I think that what we're trying to do right now is balance the budget. And that's exactly what we're talking about and we're looking at ways to do that. It's just whether or not we feel the payroll costs are growing due to these four issues or not. But I think Elaine and this department's trying to bring us a balanced budget. That's what we're working on. And it's hard, but that's what we're doing.
Board members, and this is gonna be an end conversation. I think there's layers and I think that's what we're knowing from the long-term committee that Erin, Alexis and Anna are serving on. We need to address that and look at how we do things well moving forward in the district that's growing. And yes, when we had last legislative session where some changes were made. And I don't know if I would say unfunded mandates. I think that gets away at some of the complexity of it because it sounds funded. Reading academies technically could be funded if you weren't gonna use that funding for your kindergarten program. But if you're gonna try to use that funding, because it's all in the early education allotment thing, it hit districts where it sounds like we have funding, but you go look at it and it's not, it's not doing, or fulfilling every service that we are being asked to give as a district. We're being told we need to do high-quality pre-K, full day, and we need to staff it as such. And we're being told that we have to do HB 4545. That's gonna do different training and individuals, lowered ratios where you help your students so that they can pass the STAR test. And then you have your reading academies, and that's just a few. So I agree. I think from what I'm hearing with all of y'all's discussions, I think you're all illustrating the frustration with how many different complex things are going into the system in addition to what we need to do at a legislative level and what we're gonna need to do at a district level and how we're going to work hand in hand too with our community and our taxpayers. So we are gonna have to bring them to the table as well, which brings me to another discussion. So we talked about the leadership, finance, leadership ISD or leadership ISD finance or whatever three combination of those words. And we had mentioned that at one time when we were talking about the bond. I know we're gonna end up needing that at some point. Have y'all had any more decisions on when we're going to get that open for our community? And full disclosure, this is a hard year where everybody's doing four or five different jobs. I know, wearing four or five different hats, and I really appreciate y'all. So I just was curious if y'all had a timeline yet.
We're actually working with the SCR department on rolling out instructional videos and more succinct finance information at a higher level, not in these weeds that we have in discussions here for the community.
That's great. Until we can get that committee going, I think that's tremendous. So thank y'all. Anything more, board members? Dr. Garing, anything you wanna wrap up?
Just the last comment. I appreciate the long-range committee looking at the other side and the creative solutions that we have for underutilized facilities in the district because I think this is a bigger picture. So if we can reduce what we're doing on INS side, I think that can help us to maximize what we can do on the MNO side. And so all of those, I just don't wanna lose sight of the bigger picture of how we manage the total tax rate and, you know, the INS side of the district in terms of the unbalanced growth we have across the district. It's a unique challenge that we have because of our size and our structure and the way that the population is growing and declining at the same time in different parts of the district. And so I think we have to continue to work with each other and help each other to think out of the box and to think creatively about, what does this big picture look like and how do we use that to solve the bigger problem? So I just appreciate the work that Alexis is doing to push us in that direction. I think there's some solutions in there.
Anything else?
So we have another agenda item?
Yeah, and Elaine, that's, do we need to vote on this now because this sets us in a direction? Can we wait and get more information back from the principals? Can the board? Is it an option to move this until another meeting to a time certain?
Before we make that decision, if I can, just speak to some of the conversation we had with the principals yesterday because it pertains to this directly. So I wanna wrap this into the previous conversation we had about using an example. Like if we have five vacancies now somewhere, then the likelihood is that those are difficult to fill positions because we haven't filled them, right? So we haven't been able to find somebody to hire. Middle of year hiring is very challenging for us in the district to find people. So what happens now in the spring, as we enter hiring season, folks start to think about where they're moving or leaving their other jobs. And so it opens up the job market for us. And the reason that we wanna get in early is because, and our principals mentioned this yesterday, that in the early part of the hiring season, we get the best quality teachers. And that's really what we want in our system, is the best possible people that we can get. That's gonna be true for open positions as well as these new positions. So if we say we've got 80 new positions that we need, but we have five vacant, and so we'll only put 70, we'll only release 75. If we found 80 quality teachers now, then we should probably hire all of those 80 now. If we look at this competing value of what do we want that's best for our kids. On the flip side of that, the longer we can hold off, and last year we did the extreme version of that is we didn't release any early, but it caused a lot of stress for our principals as they enter into June and July because now they're desperately trying to hire as fast as they can and there's a limited pool of quality left. And so that's the conversation we had with the principals yesterday, is help us to balance. How do we, what do we tell the board tonight about should we release these positions or not? And the principals made the argument that we would really like for the board to release these 80 positions and then allow us to control the release of those positions as we can find quality people to hire. So we wouldn't go out and have 80 people hired by next board meeting. That's not gonna happen anyway. But it gives us the ability to at least control that release. And it was interesting because part of the conversation the principals had in this very space was, then we have to, as principals, make the commitment that we're not gonna beat up Kerry Lynn every time she resists releasing positions because we're not quite ready to do that yet. And that pressure on, you know, it's gonna have to be an agreement between all of us of how to solve this very difficult to solve problem. So before we throw the 80 positions off the table entirely, I just, I feel really like we have to bring both sides of these competing values to the table. And those are very difficult decisions to make. We wanna try to release them so we can get the best quality, but as we do that, it also ties our hands somewhat. I did ask Elaine this question yesterday, and so just verify with me. If you release the 80 positions today, any that we don't hire can be amended into the budget process all the way up until the board approves the budget in June. So what I mean by that is, if we release 80 and we only hire 10, those other 70 don't necessarily have to be in the budget. Am I saying that correctly?
They don't have to be in the budget if you don't intend on filling them.
Right, so if they're not filled and we decide we're not gonna fill them, then just because you've released them today doesn't mean we have to hire them, if that makes sense. They don't go in the budget necessarily.
Dr. Garing, that does answer my question. So the board can approve this motion? We can table it, but you're saying y'all already, you've had the discussion with the principals and the principals would like the board to release them?
So I asked specifically, what would you like for me to take to the board tomorrow? And that was the conversation, that this, it really creates a lot of stress for our principals when they cannot dive into that hiring pool at its best. At the same time, it creates a lot of stress for us if they dive in and hire all those people now. And they will do, if we release positions to them, I promise you, they'll do everything in their power to hire the very best people as quickly as they possibly can. So even though I say, if we only hire 10 of them, we can still have 70 left in the budget, that's, there's a balance in there some way of how that works.
Dr. Garing, can you speak to these critical positions versus the, potentially, all of the net new positions, right? So these positions are only some of the total net new positions we would need for next year. Proportionally, what does that look like? This is 80 positions. How many are likely to come later for next year's budget?
That's a good question that I do not have the answer to. So I'm looking to friends out there. Kerry Lynn maybe can help, or Elaine, or Gina, or somebody. I don't know if I can answer that.
The positions that are on this list are all pre-K through fifth formula positions. And then it, and all high school and middle school necessary positions. It's for to start North Elementary and to open Early College High School. It does not include any special education positions because we didn't have those in yet, so they've not been considered. And it doesn't include any of the additional requests. So departments, other types of needs, because those have not been vetted yet.
Okay.
And it could be possible that a campus would have enough students to justify another administrator. We're not early releasing any of those.
Correct. So ballpark, you can correct me. It sounds like this is 90%-ish of the new positions we would anticipate needing for next year. A lot of them by formula, some for new campuses that we know we're gonna need. But there's not a lot more that we would likely see behind these. There's some, but not a lot.
Yeah, I think that's relatively true. The other piece of this is that this is based on passer projections, correct?
Actuals will drive adjustments.
Actuals will drive adjustments.
Yep.
You know, that passer number, we hadn't hit that number this year even close, so.
So the reason I ask is, let me, I'll just draw out a quick hypothetical to make sure, and not because I think this is what's actually gonna happen, but just to give us something to talk through, right? Let's suppose we release the 80 critical positions that you're early release. Let's suppose by the time that we adopt our budget, principals have hired 60 of those 80 positions, okay? I don't know if that's likely to happen, I'm just making it up, okay? And in the budget, we decide that we need to cut staffing plans for next year by 50 positions. That means we would, in aggregate, add 30 or 40 positions, not the 80. And if we've already hired 60, that means what are we doing with those folks because we've now overhired? So I'm just trying to make sure our cart's not in front of our horse in terms of hiring these folks before we get to a budget that has our final FTE count.
Yeah. Two comments to that, and then I'll let Elaine jump into. But I think we won't obviously hire all those positions immediately. So as, the longer we go without hiring them, the more information we have and the better idea we'll have about that. Principals talked yesterday about the fact that this season feels different because they anticipate a lot more teachers leaving, leaving the profession for various different reasons. We've already seen that trickle starting to happen. So there's an anticipation that there may be a higher-than-normal turnover, which may alleviate that situation through attrition at some point. So we don't know that that's gonna happen, but there's a feel that that's more of a possibility than there was in the past.
Okay, that's helpful. I think I would come back as well in terms of a data point I'm trying to get my hands on, which is the number of positions that are currently vacant that we would otherwise, and probably are already trying to find candidates for and trying to hire for. What does that schedule look like? How many positions are we talking about that are vacant that we would hire today if we could find the right candidates? And then I guess it's, how does that map up against?
Everyone's looking for a friend. I have no idea how many vacant positions. And do you want it by teachers or district-wide?
Well, let's start with big picture, right? I don't, I'm not trying to get too specific.
This 80 positions is all teachers though, right?
Well, not exactly.
Well, teachers or administrators. It's not, where our big vacancies are sitting right now in auxiliary, kinda, I'm gonna be quiet.
So I would say there's probably roughly 30 to 40 teaching positions that if there were viable candidates out there, and that's teaching positions, that doesn't include instructional assistants and all of the other positions that are vacant. Strictly classroom teacher positions, about 30 to 40.
That's helpful. It gives me sort of ballpark parameters, right? For myself, I feel a little uncomfortable in this environment, releasing this number of positions, given how many vacant positions we have and given the budget conversations we still need to have. I wanna do what's right for our principals and give them some freedom to go do this, but maybe it's how we do it because we need to be very cautious. I don't wanna get in a position where we've hired people and then we have to say, sorry, your position's gone away or I don't know if we can legally do that once we've offered a contract or, it depends on the position a little bit and some of those arrangements. But I'd like to try and stay out of that position if we can.
So there's the possibility that we could do less than 80? I'm looking.
So, so the chart is in our packet and there's 11 positions to North Elementary, which would all be new staff. There are 11 positions that fund Early College High School and that support. The rest is 58 teachers. And if we're staying where shy 40-ish teachers, this hires 58. So we would start off the year in a good place because we would, depending on growth, if we don't see the exact number, we would still only be technically 18 over, depending on if they lined up, right? So I like principals being able to hire the cream of the crop. I want to attract the best and the brightest. I think our students deserve that. I don't, if the principals promise not to start a fight with Kerry Lynn later, I think that we take them on their word on that and start the year off in a better place.
Yeah, I'm inclined to go there. My concern is if the principals go out and hire the 40 they're missing and the 58, or they make significant progress against that and we end up needing less because of our budget choices. I don't, I wanna be careful of that situation is all I'm saying.
Anna?
I'm actually concerned. I know we need these positions. I mean, it's, I, what I have a problem with or my concern is, we just had this huge discussion on a budget update and then we have an action item that's gonna essentially tie our hands to set budget in the direction. I feel like there needs, I'm not looking to delay it until June. I understand the market, trying to find teachers is incredibly hard. But as a board member, I, we just got an update. I feel like I, I personally would like to delay this vote until another month if that's possible because this is gonna be a hard budget season. And I feel like that this puts us in a position where, I'll just say, I mean, what was the point of the budget update? If we're already gonna approve this and it's putting us in the direction we need to go? That's kinda how I'm viewing it.
Kerry Lynn, can you answer a question for me? Because I feel like we have hired and if enrollment numbers don't make, it's last in, first out type situation. And so if we don't meet our enrollment projections, what is our standard practice?
Well, we have a surplus guideline list, but that, but Erin is right. Once we issue contracts for these individuals and we would issue, we would bring these names to the board as we hire them, as we go along the way. But let me just back up for a second because for the last, oh, 12 years, we've done this concept of the board approving all of the formula positions and then staffed. HR would release those positions as the enrollment came in. So we've done this concept and we've kept our staffing from being over, being overstaffed, especially at the elementary level. Now, at the secondary level, we've staffed on projections. But at the secondary, I mean, at the elementary, we've staffed on enrollment. We have so many resignations that come in before the penalty-free resignation date in June and July, wherever that date falls. I feel like we would have no problem absorbing any teaching positions into the system if we were not meeting those enrollment projections. So I think by releasing these 80, letting us assume the process that we've done in the past, to releasing those positions as our enrollment comes in, as those teachers come available that are in critical shortage areas, that are difficult to find, go ahead and getting those in our system through attrition and through those resignations that we generally see in the summer, we will be able to balance those numbers.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the addition of 80-
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the addition of 80 new positions for the 2022-2023 school year at an estimated cost of $5,94,827.
Second.
I have a move from Alex, Alexis, motion from Alexis and a second from Erin. Board members, are there any other discussions? Because I have to tell you right now, I am, I am leaning towards, I would, I would rather wait to the principals have the conversation. But I also realize too, getting this going, we can't absorb it. So right now I'm, I'm split in that discussion. So I'm just curious if any other board members where, what you are thinking.
I'm the same way. I, I personally would like to hear what the March 8 meeting is going to be about because essentially they're going to give their input. I also understand that releasing these positions allows us to hire the best. However, I, I, I just, I personally, you know, we just got this huge update on our budget. I personally, as a board trustee, need, I, I just, I don't know where I feel about this.
I think, I think we still have the parameter in place, right? Where Carrie Lynn is, it's a controlled environment. And so I think with that parameter, that's why I made the motion because it, it's a controlled environment. It's not just a free for all.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, sorry.
It's a controlled environment. Carrie Lynn just spelled that out. And we know what hiring is like right now. We know what it's like to bring in good staff right now. It is a very competitive market. And so as, as we need those positions, we need to hire those teachers and bring them in. And so I'm, I'm ready to vote on this.
I think, I think, yeah, I think what helped me was that comment that she made. I mean, it's, at the end of the day, it's not like they're just going to go out and hire all these people. It's, she's still going to control the situation based on enrollment and based on attrition as well, so.
Yeah, I think, I think us giving the, giving admin an opportunity to get that high quality person, because we are going to have some that are going to leave other districts and looking for coming into Leander ISD. And, and we, we need to give them the option to be able to do that now. That's just my
I don't know if this will help you, but the majority of the positions or the 60 elementary, we're doing that based on staffing ratios that match the state law of 22 to one. So unless we made a huge change in our staffing ratios, those aren't a risk.
And, and from what I'm hearing, this doesn't necessarily lock us into a hard position yet. So we still have that flexibility. And board, thank you for the patience. I so appreciated hearing all the different comments. Erin, what are your thoughts? All right. Well, I feel, I feel more confident. Okay. All those, anybody else want to say anything? I'm sorry. Make sure, okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. We'll move on to the next item, the business and financial monthly reports.
Yes, I do want to talk about the projections for the current year, 21, 22. So when I say this year, I'm talking 22, 23 half the time. So this current year that we're in, we did, Gina did go over this with you last month. We have an updated report for you this month, but to address some of the questions regarding the revenue projections, we're still looking at a reduction in state aid and we have broken that down in more detail for you. So just right at $9 million related to decrease in ADA and special student populations. And so that equates to the 3 million per percentage in ADA lost. And then I'll remind the board, we took a chance thinking we would be able to add a disaster penny to the tax rate. The budget was built on that. At the last minute, the legislation removed that option. So that was a $2 million loss. And then our estimates are currently on the fast growth allotment. Remember it was changed. And so compared to original budget, looking at a loss of $3 million there. So those three components are part of that 14 million in state aid. And so that's why that math didn't work with just ADA. So we are seeing some increase in overall tax collections of a million and then our Shar settlement should come in more than we budgeted. So overall, looking at revenues, right at $11 million less than budget. That is being offset by a large savings in payroll as we talked about the vacancies and not only vacancies in teacher, but auxiliary positions across the district. So 16 million in savings on expenditures right now. And those expenditure numbers are based on everything that's on the books as of January and then our estimate of what will be spent through the end of June. So that will obviously change as we get closer to the fiscal year. And we're still estimating that everyone will spend all their budgets. So we could have additional savings there. Right now, overall for the current year, we're looking at turning that current budget deficit of 29.9 million. Remember we rolled POs and that's why it grew from 25, but trimming that down to 23.8 million for the year. Hoping we can bring that down some more. I don't think there's a chance I can make this deficit go away for this year. But remember this has no hold harmless from the state. We're still in a waiting pattern on that. Will it fix the 23 million? I don't think so. But trust me, we're trying to do everything we can to make sure that 23 million comes in lower. So I just wanted to give you that update and remind you that this report will be in every monthly agenda throughout the rest of the fiscal year.
All right, board members. Okay. Thank you, Gina and Elaine. Thank you all so much. There was a lot of things for us to move through. Thank you all for giving us the information so we could churn through it. I really appreciate it.
And Gina's ready for next year. Even better.
Would you quit scaring her that way? All right. We will move on to our next agenda items. Last one for our open session, 8C5, the internal audit department quarterly report. Elaine?
Good evening. You have the, this is a standard report that I do every quarter or so. It just gives you an update of what myself and my team have been working on. And then behind that is also the unresolved status reports and what those current statuses are and current movement on those items. So any questions?
Board members, any questions? Helene GKD, that policy is going to be brought to the board and that'll pull us back into compliance once we look at that at the, at our next board meeting.
That is my understanding that Jimmy and his team will be doing that shortly.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. All right, board members, we will now, it is eight, nine, ugh, 9:50. We are moving into closed session for, for purposes permitted by Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation under attorney-client privilege matter. Texas Government Code 551.074, personnel deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment and duties of a public officer or employee. Texas Government Code 551.0821, deliberation regarding matters whereby personally identifiable information regarding one or more students will be disclosed. And Texas Government Code 551.076, deliberation regarding internal security audit and discussion with chief audit executive. There will be no action taken enclosed. We will come out to open for any actions. We will come out to open for any actions.